All right, let's go, 12:30. All right, good afternoon, welcome to the City Glendale's Council Workshop Session of October 12th, 2021. Our meeting is called to order. If you would make a note that everyone is in attendance, I'm not going to call roll today. Everybody is here. And then Ms. Bauer, if you'll introduce item one, we'll get going.
Redistricting discussion. Mayor and council, there has been ongoing community outreach regarding the redistricting process. Three community workshops were held in September. A total of 46 people attended the meetings either in person or online. Detailed attendance information is included in the council report. Public comments were collected at the meetings and on the city's website, and a summary of the comments are also included in the council report. Council discussion and direction on the proposed maps is being requested. If there is a consensus on a map today, the next step would be adoption at a future voting meeting. And if more discussion is required, the next workshop is scheduled to be held on November 9th. And with that, I will now turn it over to our consultants from the National Demographics Corporation, Doug Johnson and Ivy Beller Sikansky.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna jump right in here. Let me share my screen so I can show the slides that we have to present. There we go. And as mentioned, Ivy and I are pleased to be with you again, and we'll jump right in. I think Ivy's gonna start us off.
Yeah, turn your mic on.
That might help.
There you go.
Good afternoon. Good to see everybody again. On the first slide, of course, are the existing districts, and we'll go on to the second slide, which we have discussed previously, the redistricting process. We are currently, on October 12th, and having this workshop today to review the draft maps that have come in. And as Ms. Bauer had said, we may have the deliberations on the 9th, and perhaps we'll have council adoption on the 23rd. That was the original timetable. It is flexible, of course. The redistricting rules and goals, we have reviewed, so I won't harbor the points. Our federal laws through the Constitution and statute require that we redistrict every 10 years with the current census data, and as much as possible that we create equal population districts. Furthermore, federal, the Voting Rights Act is the one person, one vote, and of course, there is no racial or ethnic gerrymandering. Arizona statute follows up with similar wording in that Arizona statute requires that we have nearly equal numbers of inhabitants in each of the newly created districts, and goes on to say that each of the new districts should be contiguous territory and as compact as is possible. The traditional redistricting principles, which again, we have looked at previously, communities of interest, what the public tells us are their neighborhoods, geographic compactness, the districts again should be contiguous. All districts should have, we should, to the extent possible, use the visible boundaries, both natural and man-made, canals, major roads, and so forth. Respect the voters' choices in that the voters put council people into their office, and thus the continuity in office is a criteria. Planning for future growth, minimizing voters shifted to different election years, and preserving the core of existing election areas. This is a table showing the changes in population, both in the numbers and the percentiles since 2011. As you can see, Cactus had the highest change. All districts increased in population. Cactus increased the most, followed very closely by Yucca. And on the least, Choya had the least amount of growth. That's the existing lines with the current population data. Doug, go ahead and feel free to jump in. Doug will take it from here, as he may have more comments, or it looks like he's gonna go on directly to the draft maps.
Yes, indeed. So the next challenge is how do we rebalance the districts, given the different growth rates in the different districts? And as you just saw, you know, the biggest challenge is that Choya up north needs to pick up population, while Yucca in the west needs to give up population in order to come to balance. And so everything in between those two has to shift a little bit in order to make that happen. So, Draft A, it's kind of a minimal changes approach. You can see the dash green lines are the current district lines. So the only change is that Choya picks up a small corner at 59th and Bell from Saguaro. Saguaro then moves south, currently has a bit of a, what we call a stair-step approach in the southeast corner. This would move the main border down from Cactus to Choya, and square off that bottom part. In this map, actually, Cactus is completely unchanged from the current borders of Cactus. And Barrel comes south a little bit into Ocatillo. Because Ocatillo has to pick up from Yucca, it has to give something up on the east side or on the north side. And so essentially, Grand Avenue with the Phoenix-Wickhamburg Highway, as it's labeled here, and Orangewood would be the new border. So east of the highway, and north of Orangewood would go into Barrel. And then because we're looking just at minimal changes to get down to a population balance within the other criteria, and in particular, trying to stay very compact, Ocatillo, where right now it has kind of a western arm sticking off, that would just square off between Glendale and Bethany Home. Ocatillo would pick up that territory, which gives you an overall plan deviation of 8.06%, which is on the higher end, but it's within the 10% legal limit. And it's on the higher end because we're minimizing the impacts on the other changes that Ivy just mentioned. Keeping the core of the existing districts, trying to make minimal changes, move as few people from one election cycle to another, and to follow major roads. We do end up, however, with Yucca underpopulated by almost 4% to accommodate the expected future growth, faster growth in that area than in other parts of the city. So that's the kind of minimal changes approach. The other map that NDC prepared is Draft B, which is larger changes. And you can see some of the impacts of the changes here. Up on Choya and Saguaro, instead of Choya coming down on the east and west sides of Saguaro, this would shift Saguaro a bit to the west, and make that just a one-interaction kind of place, where you go up to State Union Hills all the way across, and then drop down to Bell Road for everything east of 67th. A little different approach in Saguaro from which saw before, easily compact, but this would get rid of the kind of the arm of Barrel up in the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast, and make the edge of Barrel and Saguaro a nice, and Cactus a nice clean line there. Sitting up at Cactus over in the west side of that border, before dropping down to Desert Cove and Peoria there. Cactus in this map does see a shift. It loses a little bit of population because it's slightly overpopulated right now. And so it comes down just really a block to Peoria. And then it loses the one neighborhood to Barrel that crosses 51st. Note that there's a neighborhood, and then there's a mobile home park. The mobile home park exits on the 51st and into Cactus, so that would stay in Cactus. But the one neighborhood shown by the green dashes there would shift. And then Ocatillo takes a little bit more of Yucca. We can't, if we draw that line straight down, where you see the notch there, it's too many people. Similarly, if we take that notched area, not the top area, it's too many people to get out of balance. But this is trying to bring Yucca lower in deviation, and bringing Ocatillo a little bit farther west. Essentially, the only change from the minimal changes is it picks up the area above Orangewood over that same boundary. So the net of all this is our plan deviation's a little bit lower, at 7.52%. So we've come a little closer to balance than in the minimal changes plan. And in this case, Yucca is underpopulated by 4.5%. Should note, both of these keep Ocatillo right at the same Latino voting strength towards it now. That obviously is our Latino majority seat, is the area of most sensitivity from a Voting Rights Act perspective. Then we got three new maps in. After we release those two, in this case, you can see from Councilmember Clark, Draft C, you get a little bit bigger changes on the different boundaries of Choya and Saguaro. Very similar border of Saguaro on the south side to what we showed before. But in this case, Cactus is moving farther south than in the, in Draft B. It's picking up, where you get the mobile home park they talked about, it's picking up a couple of city blocks south of that, also going to Cactus, and then Cactus down in the far southeast, comes up into Ocatillo some more. Ocatillo actually follows Grand Avenue, and it comes north into Barrel slightly, and then it just squares off. It gives up that western arm. Yucca actually picks up some territory from Ocatillo of that western arm, and then western border becomes 71st Street, more or less straight down. This plan does have a plan deviation of 8.25%. And it, and part of the reason it stays under 10% is there are a couple, as I mentioned, over on the Cactus, Ocatillo border, some city blocks where it does cross those major roads. Barrel does the same thing of crossing Orangewood and a couple of city blocks, I presume in order to reach roads. But it does, but Yucca then reaches 6.3% underpopulated in this map. Draft D, maybe we have two more. Another new map that's come in. You can see up north kind of keeps it, Choya coming down both sides, actually picks up territory, that the same minimal changes proposed territory in the east, and then Choya actually picks up a bit more on the west side, between Union Hills and Bell Road there, from Saguaro. Saguaro comes down to Choya, pretty much straight across there. Barrel again picks up the north end of Cactus. And then in this case, Cactus comes across to the kind of western arm of Cactus, it extends farther into Ocatillo than it does currently to pick up population from Ocatillo. And then Ocatillo just moves south of Bethany Home a little bit, on the west side of 67th, to pick up territory. In this map, it ends up near a perfect population balance at 1.03%. And again, keeps Ocatillo with the Latino citizen voting and share with it now. So then we have Draft D. You can see up north, Saguaro would keep that corner that was dropped, that was given to Choya, essentially keep the current border on the eastern and most of the northern edge. And then you can just see where Choya would come east, south of Union Hills Drive, until, essentially until it hits the number it needs to get. And it does stop in kind of in a part of a neighborhood there. You can see the ins and outs of that split there. Saguaro would stay at Cactus on the west side, and then comes down and picks up a bit of that arm of Barrel. Cactus would also, would then pick up territory coming south of where it extends to the west right now, that neighborhood and the, and the mobile home park would stay in Cactus, and it would, that kind of bump would extend all the way south to Glendale. And Cactus would give up the part west of 51st down at the south end of the city. That would go into Ocatillo, which would also pick up some territory on the east side of 71st, down in the southwest corner of Ocatillo. And the Latino citizen voting and share would rise slightly, 1%, and the overall plan deviation is just below 5% here, so we're good on deviation. I should note, before I wrap up here, all these maps are available, and there is another map that came in just yes, well, too late yesterday to add to the presentation, but I did add it to this interactive review map. I skipped straight here from the PowerPoint, but if folks are interested in coming back to this, if you go to the city's excellent registering website, choose the map options and mapping tools, come down to interactive review map, that will bring up this map. And this really lets anyone who's interested choose any map they want. See, you can leave the existing outlines on there, example, the minimal changes, and you can really zoom in. Should use the plus and minus, and drag the map around, and you can see the specific details of the different maps. And I was able, while I couldn't get into PowerPoint, I was able to get the new map that came in, over in Councilmember Clark, C2. And so it more or less keeps the same western border as Draft C did, but Ocatillo moves significantly south. It really gives up almost everything north of Glendale. Would come, would go, all that north of Glendale, would go into Barrel, and Ocatillo would pick up really the southeastern corner of the city. And Cactus would then move significantly north, having lost a lot of population to Ocatillo. And then you can see up north, there's some weird shape blocks up there. I'm not sure what is going on there. But the main thing to flag for this is it is population balanced. It does have a high underpopulation for the Yucca District, but it is worth noting, it does put two council members together. You would end up with two council members in the Barrel District here. So that's a quick spin through the maps. Happy to show anything in detail that you wish to see, and happy to answer any questions.
All right, we're gonna start off with Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Doug. Just kind of a technical question. Some of us were courageous enough to dig into drawing our own maps. In that area between Bell Road and Union Hills, up around 75th, 71st, in trying to choose neighborhoods to include in one district or the other, the lines get a little bit squiggly up there. And I don't know if it's a feature of the mapping process, or if it has to do with the census blocks, or with how they're designed. I know, for instance, I was hoping to be able to draw a line straight up the 71st Avenue alignment, and it wouldn't let me. It would jump back and forth. And there happens to be a drainage channel on the 71st Avenue alignment there that separates the neighborhoods east and west, to where they can't drive between each other. So I thought it would be a natural dividing location. So is that something that, should the council want to use a line like that, that could be worked out in the final stage of fine tuning? Or is there no way to get around that kind of a jagged edge up there?
The challenge is, is that, you're right, it is from the census blocks. That's how the census has drawn the blocks. Just as a little backstory on why they look odd, the Census Bureau's computers like to follow streets, and so they really dislike cul-de-sacs and hills. And you end up with these weird, just like you're talking about, these weird areas where the census block crosses two developments, because there's no road between them. It's just a wall, or in this case, a culvert. So if we want to, we really stick with the official population counts. And so to do that, we cannot split blocks. If we really have to, in certain situations, we can, by following parcel lines in the ordinance language. But then we're getting into unofficial population data, because we then have to guess at how many people are on either side. We don't have that official data count. So we really do try to avoid that in any case other than extremists, because you do introduce an element of legal risk when you start splitting the blocks.
Okay, so, given that, I've noticed that there is another proposed map that uses 75th Avenue as the boundary between those two districts, and picks up a different area to equalize that population between, between Choya and Saguaro up in that area. So I don't want to end up with a squiggly line up there, and that other map proposal looks satisfactory to me. So as far as that area up there, I would be happy to have it on 75th as opposed to 71st. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Question. My overarching concern, as you well know by now, has been underpopulating the Yucca District, because it continues to grow at a tremendous pace. And will, and I will just point out one example. Stonehaven is a master-planned community of 1,365 homes, 2.3 persons per home, that's well over 3,000 people. That will be completed most likely within the next five years. They've already got 600 homes built in that area already, which is nearly half of what Stonehaven is supposed to be. My question to the consultants is this. Have you asked our planning department for all of those projects, residential projects, that have been approved and plotted, but either are under construction or not yet developed, in obtaining good data information for what the anticipated future population count is for the Yucca District, when those subdivisions are realized?
No, we have not, because I don't think we need it. I think the record is clear that Yucca is fast-growing. And, you know, we'll take the city's word for it, that it's gonna grow faster than the others. Especially, the key thing being that, as you know, within the percentage range allowed, we certainly can't accommodate all the expected future growths. You know, we can do what we can. But it, you know, obviously, there's gonna be thousands of people coming to the area. The difference between the different maps, you know, is whether Yucca is underpopulated, you know, by, I guess the difference is about 750 people between the range of maps before you, which isn't, isn't gonna be enough to offset that actual growth, you know that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So when you say population deviation on these map, draft maps, are you, overall population deviation, for example, Map A, which was one of the maps that you submitted, the consulting company, shows 8.06%. So that means you're moving people, 8% of the people into another district, right? By the results, the result of this map would be to move 8% of the people. So, is that right?
No, sorry about the confusion there. No, that's the resulting difference between the biggest and smallest districts.
Okay. So do you have, because, and it's one of the, one of the federal requirements, I think, that we try to move as few people into another election cycle as possible. So do you have any data that shows on all these drafts, like how many people, I mean, we can look at the map and see, you know, how many are in each district, but the, another important number, just probably as important, is how many people are moving into another election cycle, and gonna be represented by somebody they didn't vote for, and all the things that go with that. So do you have a way to get that data to us? Analyze the maps that we have, and any future maps we may submit, but give us that data, like how much of this population is moving into another election cycle district? I don't know who to look at. He's here and you're there.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, yes. We can calculate that. We have not run the numbers. As you know, you can, you can see on the maps, the scale have changed in each map. But we can certainly get those numbers for you.
Okay. Mayor, if I could continue. And your preliminary, your change since 2011 show that Barrel District grew substantially, and Cactus District grew a little bit more even than the Yucca District. And there's, those districts, I believe, still have, and also the Ocatillo, you know, I mean, there are conversations happening around more multifamily and other things happening in Ocatillo. There's potential for growth in, a little bit of potential in the Choya District, a little bit in the Saguaro District, but there's potential for growth in all of the other districts really combined. So I know that makes it a little bit challenging, but I'm a little concerned about allowing for growth only in one district, when obviously, looking at this, growth has happened, it's been pretty evenly distributed across that part of the city anyway, pretty much south of Peoria. Is that basically, would that be, that, you know, 12%, 13.6% and 13.5%? So, you know, if we're gonna allow for that, I just would say that I don't know if it's something we should be doing, if we're not considering the growth that's been happening, if that's what we're using it to compare it to in other parts of the city. I mean, is that, shouldn't we get the holistic picture, rather than just saying, well, this district's got a new subdivision going in? And I know there's been a lot of homes being built in for sure, and all, really, all over, every bank and parcel is going to be a home of some sort, probably, so.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. I, we've just been relying on the feedback we've gotten so far. We can certainly, as Councilmember Clark suggested, we can certainly ask the planning department for what's expected in the, in the near term over the, by each current district.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Aldama.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I don't, I don't think I lacked any courage in creating my own draft. Rather, I trusted the process. This council asked for a consultant, and we paid for a consultant. Asked for a very knowledgeable and very experienced consultant. We landed with NDC, who was founded in 1979, over 40 years. They follow all federal applicable laws. They follow all state applicable laws, and they, and they follow all the redistricting guidelines. You've done this for years. You said to us that you used the census data that was provided by the federal government. We can't change that. You said that there was a requirement of just minimal changes. It does that. It doesn't change the, speaking of Draft A, it keeps it at 52% of Latinos. And just so everybody knows on this board, I am the only Latino here. Nobody who drafted any of their drafts asked me my opinion whether or not we wanted to increase it or decrease it. In fact, in speaking to my constituents, we welcome anybody of any descent, and I'd welcome more Caucasians in my district. I think it's great to have more Caucasians in my district. So nobody asked me. However, NDC did ask me. They asked me my thoughts on how do I want the district to grow. I said, hey, if any council member doesn't want, any constituent, give them to me. I'll take them all. I don't care what color you are. I'm happy with Draft A. It has minimal changes. It keeps it at 52%, if that's what the consultant said we need to stay at. There's a underpopulation over in the Yucca District at 3.82%. I think, for myself, I feel that Draft A meets the needs of our community, and that's a recommendation by a professional consultant who has over 40 years of doing this, and they've done thousands of these things. I'm gonna put my trust from my constituents that they have in me, into the both of you, and follow the process. And I just want everybody to know, right now, before we have more dialogue, that I'm okay with Plan A. with Plan A. I'm just fine the way it is. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I too have studied these. I made some of my own maps. I didn't have them published, but I do have several of them here. And I like simplicity. I believe the fewer changes that we can make, I think, is better for the constituents. And we've received a few emails from people saying, you know, let's, let's try to keep our neighborhoods together. And so simplicity is what I would like to see, and I think Map A does simplicity. However, I do believe there can be some tweaks to that. I think between council members, I think we can discuss, you know, some ways to make the boundaries better. Just an example, I know there was comments from the Copperwood resident talking about if Map A divides that neighborhood. And I think we can accommodate that by tweaking the boundaries a little bit, similar to what Mr. Turner's map showed on that south boundary. So I like simplicity. I'd like to see us move forward with the least amount of changes for the residents as we can see, as we can make. Obviously, we've got to add population as the takeaway population. But if we can minimize the boundary changes that we have now and accomplish that, that's kind of what I would like to see done. And I think A does that in the most part. However, I do believe that we can fine-tune that. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I think, and I'm not willing to say right now, I think Draft A is good. I'd be willing to go with Draft A. The issue with Draft A, I think, in my opinion, is, is that it really overpopulates Cactus, who had, who, based on your presentation, had even more growth in the Yucca District over the last 10 years. So I, if it's possible to come, I'm not sure, I was looking to see if November 9th is a workshop. So there'll be another workshop on November 9th. If we had all of the final plats that have been approved, information by district, then we would be able to know whether this would be not a good idea based on the, I mean, you're showing on Draft A, 41,210 in Barrell, 43,132 in Cactus, 39,793 in Choya, 42,409 Ocatillo, 42,051 in Suaro, and 39 in Yucca. I would just want to know for sure that there's not several final plats approved that is going to put this district up around, you know, 44,000 or somewhere in that neighborhood, which would, I think, have us pretty, I think, pretty far out of balance when some of the districts are under 40. So I'm, you know, I'm willing to move forward. And I did want to say that I didn't know we were supposed to ask permission for anybody to use the map tool, and I accidentally published five because I didn't know how to use the tool. So there was no offense, or, you know, it was just literally just looking at it and trying to, the tool, for me anyway, was not really very easy to use. Because you, making changes is not, is not that easy. And like you said, with the census tracts and things, you, you know, you move it one and you populated a whole bunch of neighborhoods that you weren't even trying to populate. So I think we've got a pretty good format, I think, with something considering Draft A. But if we could know for sure what other final plats there are out there for residential, citywide, by district, I think we need to know that before we move forward. Thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. I apologize, I missed one item. And I think maybe Councilmember Melner may have mentioned it. Again, I'm, I'm still with, I support Draft A, but I also wanted to mention that, as is, no changes, that would be my preference. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hugh.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I've already underlying Draft A is the one that I'm supporting. Probably the same reason some of my other colleagues spoke to, it's a minimal change. I know, I was kind of shocked when I saw the numbers that Cactus had the biggest gain. But if you drive through the neighborhoods, it's not new development, you'll see three, four, five, six cars and trucks parked at the houses. I think we have maybe multiple generations or families all living together. And that's probably what shot my population up in the Cactus District. But I like A. To me, it's simple. It's the same reason the consultant came up with it and didn't have any other motivation of mine but draw the best map they could. And I'm in favor of Draft A. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I echo Councilmember Tomachoff's sentiment. We need to know what residential developments have been plotted, approved, or are under construction that would not have been counted in the 2020 census for each district. That is critical information that needs to be included. The only problem that I have with Draft Map A is, if you notice, there were three or four emails that came from the Independence Heights neighborhood that wanted to stay within the Yucca District. This map does not accommodate their request. So I am strongly advocating, you know, I don't, I'm strongly advocating that there be a straight line down along 71st Avenue. And although my two maps are not perfect, it shows that that, that proposition of moving straight down 71st Avenue can be accommodated. And I will also say this. In every census that I've been through, the public has always been invited to participate. We hire consultants that give us their best advice, their best counsel. But as far as I know, this is still a democratic process that allows any and all who wish to participate the right to do so. And I appreciate the advice of the consultants and their efforts at drawing maps. And I'll tell you what, my maps suck. They're not that good. But I tried. And I encourage other citizens to try as well. They may not be perfect maps, but they, they may reflect something that you feel is important in drawing districts for, for the city. So I encourage, people still have an opportunity, I believe, through November. Would that be correct? Consultant?
Yes.
All right. People still have an opportunity to go to the website, use that District R mapping feature, and try and draw your own map. It's like a Chinese jigsaw puzzle. You move one thing around, and all of a sudden, you find out that you've populated one district with 100,000 people, which you can't do. So it's a good exercise in working the puzzle to see what works out the best for each district. So my only comment is, is that I really would like 71st Avenue to be a straight line dividing Yucca and Ocatillo. And I think it's critically important that we see what development is occurring that was not captured by the 2020 census back last, last year's, spring of last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. If my use of the word courage earlier offended anybody, Councilmember Aldama, I apologize for that. It wasn't meant that way. It wasn't about, it was simply about using the mapping process, you know? It was, it's fun, go ahead and do it, but it's, it's challenging at the same time. And it was just simply about digging into the mapping process and doing that. It wasn't intended to be a personal slight on any individuals. A few things that I was attempting to accomplish in my mapping was to have minimal changes, move as few people from one district to another, or back into a district that they were moved out of 10 years ago, flipping them back and forth. And to certainly, you know, to minimize moving them from one election cycle to another, which were goals, were criteria that we adopted, you know, two weeks, or two meetings ago when we, when we started this process. So I was trying to conform with that. I absolutely appreciate the work of the consultants and the tools that they've provided us. I also believe that council members know our districts perhaps better than they do, the ins and outs of them, where a culvert might be, or, or the difficulty that residents may have at actually understanding on a long-going basis what district they're in. And I was looking in part to minimize those problems too. And two that come to mind are, one is in the district I represent, the Barrell District, and it's that arm that heads east out, just north of Peoria Avenue. It's only a few blocks wide and a mile long. And Councilmember Melner and I have, at different times, had difficulties remembering and distinguishing where the boundary lines are and where parks or residence or streets were in whose district. And we know that the residents have that same difficulty. So what I was hoping to do was to draw a map that utilized half-mile streets or mile streets, or Grand Avenue, or a drainage culvert that you couldn't traverse, those types of things, rather than local neighborhood streets where your neighbor across the street, which is the case on Desert Cove, for instance, and a lot of people go, well, where in the world's Desert Cove? Well, people in my own district and, you know, people two blocks away go, where's Desert Cove? It's not a significant street, other than the wonderful people who live on it. But if the line goes down that street, the people that live on the north side of it are in one district, and their neighbor that they say hi to when they put out the garbage on Monday morning or Tuesday morning are on the, on the, in a different district. So it makes more sense to me to have it follow the half-mile and the major mile boundaries, those sorts of things. And that's what I was, part of what I was trying to accomplish. And also to keep, there's, there's an anomaly that we have that's, you know, been on my mind ever since I got on the council and, and I took the opportunity to speak to the council member whose district it is in. But down there in the Cactus District, which is the backwards L and the foot, foot that goes to the west just above Camelback Road, there's a neighborhood down there that's a quarter mile by a quarter mile, or maybe half mile by half mile. It's south of Missouri and east of 59th Avenue, that is totally separated from the rest of the Cactus District by a mile and a half, or maybe even two miles of industrial, the railroad tracks, Grand Avenue, the big drainage retention base in Long Grant. It's really isolated. And it just seems to me that it might be a good idea, if we have the opportunity and needed to move some population out of Cactus, that we join it with the district right across 59th Avenue from it, that, that they probably relate to more anyway. And those were the kinds of changes that I was looking to make, is to make minimal changes, keep the population balanced, appreciate that some districts will have more growth. But I can, I'm willing to guess that I may have as many as 600 homes that either had not yet been moved into by the time, at the time the census was taken, or whose final plats in construction is, is on the books now. So it's not any one district that's going to grow. You know, we're all going to grow some, and, and either we get into that or we don't. I happen to think, I like to look at the census as a snapshot in time, and that's what we point to. But if the rest of the council wants to, and I tried to appreciate, you know, that there are two districts that were overpopulated. But if, the other thing is, is if we underpopulate a district or two, then by, in essence, we're overpopulating other districts. We don't know what the future's going to hold. There's no guarantee, you know, we can, there was a lot of non-growth during the recession years. We don't know that that's not going to happen again. And, but if you underpopulate one district and overpopulate others, those in the overpopulated districts have less representation than those in the underpopulated do. And it doesn't seem right to me to do that. The whole idea was, we take a census, we draw the boundaries, and it's been that way for 200 and almost 50 years now, yes, and, and that's kind of the concept I was working with. So I would like to see, if possible, that, that arm that goes west out of my district for their sake, you know, be united in a way that makes sense to them with the district that is actually, you know, closer and adjacent to them. But, and I would like to see that that Copperwood area that, I've had a number express to me, and one or more has written in saying that they'd rather not be divided. And if you have a square mile and you don't need to divide it, let's not. You know, let's not take two and split them in half when we could adjust in one and not touch the other. Thank you.
Mayor. Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Turner, thank you for reaching the olive branch with regard to your comment. And I am very much so acceptance of that. Thank you for clarifying. However, I do want to mention, somewhere I am, now that you mentioned being offended, I am very offended. You said your, your map is, has very minimal changes. Sir, there's nothing minimal about your, about your map. For the residents of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Turner is requesting in his map and suggesting that he takes, takes on the downtown district, including Catlin Court. There is nothing minimal about that, sir. Nothing at all. So I am offended by that, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear with the Ocatillo District, that that's what Councilmember Turner suggested is minimal. There's nothing minimal about that. Thank you. And I, Mayor, one last thing. Again, I, I think we should move on, and I still support Plan A with no changes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, it's my turn. I think it's dangerous that we start trying to assume what we think the population's going to be tomorrow. I think that the whole purpose of the census is, again, exactly what we have, when we have it at that time. And that's, that's what we have to go by. I understand that Yucca has the potential of being the largest district in a very short time. I get that. But that's, that's the census. That's just what the process is. I understand trying not to separate neighborhoods and blocks and things like that, but keep in mind that we also have the legislative redistricting, we also have the congressional redistricting. People are, there's going to be a lot of movement. I think the least that we can do, as far as changing people on the city level, I think is advantageous for our entire city. Try as hard as we can to keep the core people for the last 10 years, for the next 10 years. And I understand there's going to be a lot of growth, but you know what, the council 10 years, now can worry about that. Me personally, I think that we should all be just really tickled, the fact that we get, we get to sit here and talk about this discussion, about this growth. There's a lot of cities back east that wished that they had the same problem that we have. I do like Draft A. I have heard everybody, not everybody, several people say they would support a Draft A. I guess my question is, if we had a consensus on Draft A, understanding that the council would like the opportunity to come back on Draft A and make minimal changes, I would ask the council, is that acceptable to everybody?
Mayor, I'm not ready to go there yet. I think the consultant has received a lot of suggestions from this council today. And I think the importance of looking at, at even though you say it's a snapshot in time, I think one of the criteria that we look at is accommodating future growth. And when everyone says they can't predict what will happen in the future, well, if you already have plotted subdivisions, you know they're going to get populated. Since when have you saw a subdivision not have anybody move into it? So if they're plotted and approved, no matter what district, there's population coming into that district. And I think it's time we got a handle on and figured out who's, who's can anticipate future population growth over the next, until the next census. So I think it is appropriate to accommodate future growth. Otherwise, what Councilmember Turner said with districts that would be overpopulated right now and the dilution of vote, that is exactly what you will do to districts that are all, if you plan for each district being equal and not accommodating future growth, you are intentionally planning the future dilution of voters within those districts that are growing. That's not right either. So I don't think we should consider that in the equation. But go by data and go by facts. And facts are, we need more data. Thank you, Mayor. So I'm, I'm not ready to approve any one map yet.
Mayor, go ahead. I shook my head in no when you asked for consensus. Again, I just want to clarify, I can support A with no, no changes as is, the way it is now, and I'm going to trust the process. They did bring data, and you brought experience and knowledge, and I'm... They did bring data, and you brought experience and knowledge, and I don't think we need to make any changes, and I think we need to vote on it. I think there was a process that you went out and you spoke to people, and some came out, some did not, but I didn't get any derogatory comments from anybody. So I said no simply because I don't want any changes to A, and I think we should move on.
Okay, and I appreciate it. We're not taking a vote today. We're trying to come up with a plan that works, and that's why I had offered that. If everybody sort of likes A and there was some tweaking that needed to be done, at least we have the opportunity to have that discussion. By just simply saying yes or no today, I don't know where we're going to be at. So we can go down the line and get everyone's opinion. Mr. Mallor.
If your statement is that we move forward on A with the possibility of doing some tweaking to it, is that?
That was my question, yes, sir.
That, I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Councilmember Tom Chough.
I would be in favor of that also.
Mr. Hugh.
I'm not sure about tweaking anything in Draft A, but yeah, I'm in favor of Draft A, and I like it as submitted.
Okay.
We'll see what happens, Mayor.
Right, and we know where Councilmember Clark is.
Well, it disenfranchises that whole Independence neighborhood that I just mentioned that we got emails about.
Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding that neighborhood we got emails about, and we got even a map, but it doesn't indicate to me on the map exactly where the Independence Heights neighborhood is. So.
It's west of 71st Avenue.
If you would do me a favor and let me know there. And then as far as Draft A, as far as Draft A, I think it does need some tweaking up in my district. And I'm pleased that other council members are happy with how Draft A came out for them. But it really cuts, chops right through two square miles in my district and cuts them in half, which is not keeping neighborhoods together, respecting communities of interest, and, you know, providing that kind of simplicity. It still uses a quarter-mile or smaller street as a boundary, as I recall, and it flips people that had just been moved 10 years ago from one district back to the district they came in. So I do think that there's some tweaking, I would say, on the boundary between Beryl and Saguaro that I think can be improved. And I'd be happy to work with any member of the council and the consultants to provide those ideas, and that's, those are the ideas that I gave in my draft map. And I don't think that there's much, it involves any real significant change in population numbers between the districts, just about providing a more logical, more beneficial boundary between them. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm totally clear. I didn't understand what you said. Draft A.
With tweaking.
Would you support that with minor tweaking, is my?
Well, I don't know what you consider minor, but I think that there's issues.
Minor is minor, not major. So that's the best I can offer right now.
There are issues regarding the boundary between the Beryl District and the Saguaro District, that it's, those aren't, that's not the best boundary line through there, but I think we could come up with a better one that actually keeps neighborhoods together, keeps the population balanced basically the same that it is now.
Right. And again, so everybody's clear, I'm not advocating for major changes. I'm trying to limit it down to something that we all can work with. You have a timeframe where we have another three or four weeks that has to be done? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that this gets us closer to where we all want to be, but if we don't come up with something, I don't think we're going to have anything. So.
And I'm willing to have a discussion. I don't know where that neighborhood is that Councilmember Clark's referring to either. So that's why I think we move forward, we'll leave it open for discussion of trying to do the very best that we can. So, I mean, you know, I don't know where that Independence Heights, is that what it's called? I don't even know where that is. So, but I'm certainly willing to have a discussion, try to accommodate keeping that neighborhood and not dividing a neighborhood in half. So with my, I would consider that a minor tweak also. So I think, I think it's a good idea to just to pick a map that most everybody seems to be okay moving forward with, and then having further discussion about how can we improve it.
So that is what I'm asking. So I think we have a consensus on that. And I, Councilmember Aldama.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mallor was asking me the location of that, and I think it's important that, yeah, we do listen to our constituents, but Independence Heights is what Okatillo District lost in 2010. And on the corner of 75th Avenue and Bethany Home Road is a proposed development that would help modernize the homes in the district. So Independence Heights is important to the district. That would bring in one, two, three newer developments that the district needs, and I think it helps modernize it, and I think losing it is a major change. So, yeah, I'm okay with A and going forward with looking at it with minor changes, but taking away Independence Heights, you're taking away modernizing the district, and I think that area also brings in more Caucasian families into the district, and I think that's what we're looking for.
Okay. So for, ma'am?
Yes.
So my question for you is, where do we go from here? Do you take comments made by this council with Map A and then make those minor tweaks and then come back at another workshop in a couple of weeks?
Yes, we can certainly do that.
Okay, so I believe we have a consensus for A with minor tweaks. I didn't see consensus for any other map. Is that correct? Yes?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right. So effectively, we all got what we didn't want just now, so I guess that's about as fair as it's going to get. Ms. Power.
Ergas 303, annexation AN 230, application for approximately 63 acres located south of the southeast corner of Northern Avenue and Cotton Lane.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to provide staff report on this item. As they get set up to use the computer, will be Tabitha Perry. She's our interim planning administrator.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. This application for annexation is being brought before you based on the 2019 adopted annexation policy. Also, the subject property is part of the Global Epcore Agreement as well as the pre-annexation Development Agreement. The subject site is 63 acres in size and located at the south of the southeast corner of Northern Avenue and Cotton Lane. The property is currently within the county with zoning classifications for plant, industrial, and light industrial. The city's general plan, land use destination, is regional mixed RMU, and upon annexation, the most compatible light zoning would be M1 for light industrial. The applicant is also proposing to rezone the property from the light industrial N1 to PAD, Planned Area Development, to allow for industrial and commercial land uses. In the PAD, the applicant is proposing maximum building heights of 100 feet. The vicinity map is to depict the miles from City Hall, which is approximately 13.5 miles from City Hall. The aerial map before you is to provide a little more context to the subject property. To the north is a ongoing annexation proposal. To the south is property that was already annexed into the city titled Glendale 303, and that's the portion that you see outlined in pink. West of Cotton Lane is a single-family residential that is in the county. And also for the subject property, you can see on the end closest to, on the east end, close to Loop 303, there's two small parcels that is not included on the very end to the north and to the south. Those parcels are not part of this application. Those will remain in the county, and they are developed with a billboard on each parcel. Here's the current annexation map, just showing you in comparison of where this annexation application is located in comparison to other applications that are in the process. Here is a conceptual site plan that is still under review with staff. Along Cotton Lane would be the main access point, so that frontage is approximately 1,200 feet long along Cotton Lane. And they are proposing for minimum setbacks of 20 feet from residential land uses, but on the conceptual site plan, they are actually depicting more than 100 feet from Cotton The subject property is not within the Luke Air Force Base North contours, so a general plan amendment will not be required. We received a fiscal impact analysis through a third party that indicates that the approximately 1.1 million square feet of development will generate a positive net fiscal impact to the city, with one-time fees estimated at $4.2 million, and that will include construction, sales tax, planning application, permitting fees, development impact fees. The annual estimated revenues to the city would be $250,000. Here is a bar chart, just to kind of illustrate more of what the revenues and expenditures would be. The revenue shows at $380,000, then the expenditures being at $130,000. Those expenditures are primarily for ongoing street maintenance as well as public safety, and another aspect of that would be for the general fund, with the average net benefit to the city once again at $250,000 per year. With that, Mayor and council, I'm looking for a consensus on whether or not staff can proceed with the application. I'll be happy to answer any questions staff that the council may have.
Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Perry, is there an end user for this project?
Mayor, council members, there is no identified end users at this time that planning staff is aware of.
I'm just a little concerned that we're doing so much industrial spec out there that we may end up with a bunch of really big empty buildings out there. Especially because the residents out there are, you know, not happy with us. You know, I mean, nobody wants to live across the street from a 100-foot building out there. These are, I think that's Clearwater Farms, is it? I'm not sure. But, I mean, they're large lots, it's county, it's, you know, I mean, these people have a lifestyle, and I think, I mean, I understand the growth, I understand the meat, how, what it means to residents of our city, but I'm just starting to get a little concerned that we're approving one after the other with no end user. So I don't know if anybody else hears any of those concerns, but we have no idea, you know, what this is going to end up being. We, how long is it, the building's going to go up, and then how long is it going to be vacant? What kind of traffic is going to be coming into the area? I mean, these people are going to essentially be our neighbors because we're moving in next door to them, really, as Glendale. So I just, we've done a lot of, recently, a lot of approval for spec industrial, and I just don't know, maybe somebody could get back to me on what the, you know, what the fill rate is on these, you know, are they filling up quickly? And that we're literally, as soon as we approve it, they get an end user, and then we're moving on and doing another spec one? But I would just like to know that, that we're being, I think it's, I understand what it, I understand the economics of it, but I still think we should be as good a neighbors as possible. We have no idea what could end up happening here on this site. Thank you.
Mr. Fradman, are you available to maybe address that?
Mayor, go ahead. Mayor, councilmember, this is already entitled in the county for industrial. So if we don't accept it, we are not stopping anything, even to the extent that there is spec or is not spec. They have the ability to do industrial, or they have the ability to do industrial in the county, as I understand it. So to the, so I guess the point that I would make is, to the extent we annex it in, they'll be developing at our standards, otherwise they'll be developing at county standards. Now, just in your kind of processing of this, keep that in mind as well, is that this is a little unique, that it's not already in the city, and that we have some ability to negotiate with them at this point in time for a different type of use or anything in that regard. We will not have that ability until we annex them in, noting, of course, again, that they have, it's, their existing legal right is for industrial, and we will have to honor that when we annex them in.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Bailey. But there is a corresponding zoning case to change the zoning to a PAD, which means that there's going to be some uses that are already not an entitlement for. So I don't know what those would be, especially not knowing who the end user, is that going to be multi? I don't know. I mean, we just don't know. Obviously, they feel like they need more flexibility than what the current zoning is that going to be once they're annexed into the city. So I would, I would just be curious for myself, for my own reasons, to know, even if they're, if they already have the entitlement, but almost all of these are associated with the zoning case on the back end, to change the zoning to something else that is a little more flexible, which means that there's some idea that it's, that it's going to be something more than what they could do with the county zoning that they have. So just out of curiosity, like I said, I just, I mean, I do, I do feel bad for these people out there. I don't think they think that we feel bad for them, but we do. I mean, once the 303, the investment was waiting the 303 to be a catalyst out there. So, I mean, I understand the economics of, you know, spending that much money on infrastructure. You know, freeway frontage is pretty much gone everywhere else in the West Valley, so I totally understand it. I just want to make sure that we're being as good a neighbor as we can possibly be. These people, you know, that live, you know, on these acre or two-acre lots, they've got a lifestyle that they really love, and I just hope that we at least make our footprint as soft as we possibly can. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of the council, a number of questions were raised. There is, yes, a tremendous amount of spec building taking place, but it's only because they know it's in the pipeline for end users, and so you're not seeing people putting huge amount of capital at risk without understanding where the market is at. We're seeing tremendous amount of activity for end users that are happening. The city attorney was correct in that, I mean, I think the advantage of coming in, the PAD is going to give it similar uses that the county has, is that we, like, the setbacks, we've been, tried to be very, very concerned about how we do setbacks. So we're really working with the developers to push away from the residential as far as possible. And then there's always a converse to this. The council's already approved projects kind of to the south, for example, that are high-intensity industrial manufacturing. If we put residential next to them, it has an impact on them as well. So there's no necessarily easy solution. But I'll ask our economic development team, Councilmember Tom Chough, to put together a memo for you that can kind of give you, you know, kind of a lay of the land. But right now, I know, I just saw an updated report end of last week, we have 14 end-user projects, I know, just in the Loop 303 area going right now. So they are, they're building spec only because they know really quickly they're filling that space up and going forward. But we'll get a report out to you on that.
Mr. Mallor.
Thank you, Mayor. Tabitha, you had mentioned that the requested setback was going to be 20 feet from Cotton Lane, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Mallor, along Cotton Lane, the PAD is proposing 60 feet from being adjacent to. feet from being adjacent to any residential land use. But on their conceptual site plan, they are showing a minimum of approximately a hundred feet from Cotton Lane.
What was the twenty-foot that you mentioned? What was that about?
I'm not sure if I mentioned twenty feet.
I heard you say twenty feet.
I don't remember saying twenty feet.
I wrote it down, so that's why I asked.
I'll add on to that. There is a twenty feet. It shows a twenty feet in the proposed PAD. It does show twenty feet for a front yard, for the rear being sixty, side being sixty, and side street being twenty-five. But once again, on the conceptual site plan, they are proposing much greater setbacks in those.
Okay. I would just, along with this concern that council member Tomachoff brought up, you know, the setbacks be appropriate for being next to a, to a neighborhood. And when you said twenty, that wasn't, didn't seem correct. So, thank you.
Further discussion? We have consensus? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you. Mr. Power, item three.
Airport strategic plan.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide the next staff report will be Carl Newman. He is our airport administrator. And we're going to walk you through a body of work that's been in, in the works for some time. And so we're, Carl, I'll turn over to you and your, your team.
Thank you, Mr. Are we on here? Thank you, Mr. Phelps, and good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As Mr. Phelps indicated, my name is Carl Newman, and I've been your airport administrator for next month will be, be two years. And we are here today to share the Glendale Municipal Airport strategic plan with you. So what I hope to achieve over the next few minutes are four different things. So one is, we want to talk with you a little bit about who the folks were that developed the plan, the process that we went through, and what we believe the airport should be as we move forward. And last but not least, we have a number of goals that we want to work through and implement for the next several years, and we want to share that with you as well. So the people that are responsible for developing this plan are Mr. Terry Aramian, who is one of our airport commissioners, and I believe Mr. Aramian is in the room, Michael Portik, another aviation advisory commissioner, transportation director, was part of the process, Parab Adabala, transportation planning administrator, the city of Glendale was part of the process. Many of you probably know Jim Gumm, who is our airport operations supervisor. And sitting beside me today is Ms. Roxanne Alexander, our management assistant, all of whom provided great input into developing this plan. I think it's important to note that, good as we are, we didn't have the facility to go out and do this, you know, all on our own. And so we worked with a firm called Genesis Consulting, was a sub consultant to, to Dibble. I should point out that while we sent out electronic version of the strategic plan to, to you all as part of the process, this one, we provided a, a copy of it for you, hard copy. And whenever you have a little trouble sleeping at night, you can pull this out, read through it, and catch a few wings. So glad to provide those for you. So just want to talk a little bit about, you know, the process we worked through. First and foremost, first thing we did was to, to jump on our mission, vision, and values. Took a little bit of time to conduct some research and do situational analysis, conducted a lot of interviews. And you're going to hear a little bit about that in just a moment. Went through a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And from that analysis, we developed critical goals and initiatives for us to work through over the next five years or so. And, and we developed an implementation plan. So in terms of our mission, our mission is to connect Glendale to the region, state, and world. We're going to do that by providing exemplary aviation services. Our vision is to be Arizona's premier general aviation airport. There's an airport on the east side of town called Scottsdale Airport, that I think most people, you know, certainly in the valley and in the state, would, would suggest to you that that's a very good airport and, and want to aspire to be. We want to exceed what they've done over at Scottsdale Airport. And in terms of values, our values are integrity, fairness, collaboration, and continuous improvement. As I indicated a little bit earlier, as we're describing the process, we conducted a situational analysis to get a broad view of the local and regional interests that affect and influence the airport's future planning and economic development efforts. The group worked through and examined several influences, including those from the region, communities, you know, surround the airport, look at transportation corridors, development areas, the city of Glendale's governance. And last but not least, you know, some of the past history and the development of the airport. As part of the situational analysis, stakeholder interviews were conducted. Our team conducted eighteen interviews with three, three separate groups. The first group was the internal Glendale Municipal Airport stakeholders. Folks in this group included airport tenants, our air traffic control manager, and the aviation commission chairman, Larry Rovey. The external Arizona and national airport stakeholders included representatives from Luke Air Force Base, the Federal Aviation Administration, the Arizona Department of Transportation, and a representative from the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. And the last group, certainly not the least group, was the city of Glendale and Peoria officials. And in that group, we had a chance to interview the mayor, council member Clark, our city manager, several department heads, and also the mayor of Peoria. Based upon the interviews, a number of strategic interviews were identified, and those included financial stability, infrastructure improvements, safety and security is always at the top of the list for anybody that is involved with an airport, marketing and business development. Certainly, you know, customer satisfaction was important to us. But one of the big questions that we needed to ask and answer for our team was, when all is said and done, what should the Glendale Airport be? And you can see from the slide that is in front of you that we took and stop-sized, you know, each of the, for each of the three groups, you know, their comments on what they thought it, thought it should be. When we took that and we boiled it all down, what it basically means is that Glendale Municipal Airport will continue its current role as, as a GA airport, while enhancing and developing corporate aviation, some heavy maintenance and support services, both on and adjacent to the airport. And again, we want to exceed what is going on at the, at Scottsdale Airport. And airports' financial statements, budgets, and other performance measures are essential tools for achieving goals and realizing the mission and vision for the airport. And we spent quite a bit of time talking about the airport's finances and what needs to be done there. One of the things that we should note is that we don't really have a business model, you know, for the airport. And, but that, you know, comes some, some major issues. I'd just like to share with you that for fiscal year 2020, the expenses for the airport were $890,674. And the airport generated revenue on, revenue from the airport generated on the airport was $623,479. This is only approximately seventy percent of the expenses. And so the balance of the funding for the airport came from the general fund, $147,000, and also from the transportation sales tax, $120,000. One of the important things that we need to do was we worked through this issue of strategy with the airport is to ensure that it becomes self-sufficient. There are a lot of reasons for that. So just a moment ago, I, you know, I spoke to you about, you know, the budget for the airport. And yesterday, and I apologize for this, we developed an additional slide for you. You probably have it at your seat. And what it basically does is, in addition to the operating revenues for the airport, it discusses some of the capital funding for the airport. And on average, what that slide should tell you is about, on average, we receive about $1.3 million every year, on average, from our business partners at the FAA and also from ADOT. If we had just shown, if we added all up, you'd be out of whack. And so we wanted to make sure that while we averaged $1.3 million over the last couple of years, we also received a couple of big tranches of cash for the airport, to the tune of about $9.2 million. And that was a result of reimbursements from the FAA and ADOT for land acquisition purchases that were made over time. So in terms of the SWOT analysis, you know, we did, we conducted that. And in terms of strengths, the aviation advisory commission for the airport is very, very supportive of the team and what's being done out there. The, we have a contract air traffic control tower. That's a very important feature for, for us. There are airports around the state that would love to have an air traffic control tower. And I will tell you that some of the more important and larger corporate operations will not fly into an airport that does not have a control tower. And they simply won't do it. And then, last but not least, we have space to grow for the east side development. In terms of weaknesses, our airport is relatively new, but it's starting to approach, you know, forty years old. And so we have aging infrastructure. We have a lack of business diversity, and the aesthetics of the airport leave a little bit to be desired. In terms of opportunities, one of the big things that is a benefit to us is, is our proximity to the Glendale Entertainment District. And as time goes on, corporate aviation continues to grow, and so we have an opportunity to get in on some of the corporate development. In terms of threats, one of the big ones is, is we're relatively close proximity to a couple of airports owned and operated by the city of Phoenix. Good Year Municipal Airport is about four or five miles to the south of us. Your Valley is to the north and east of us. And they are both, both competitors of ours. I mentioned a little bit earlier that we are financially dependent. And then, again, you know, the, the public's perception of the airport, airport's appearance is problematic. As I've visited with the folks from economic development, who have to try and work with us to, to bring entities to the table, the, the appearance of the airport is a tough sell. So as a result of the SWOT, our team identified twenty-four goals to achieve. We boiled all those, those twenty-four goals down to what we call six critical goals. They are the development and implementation of an airport business plan, the development and implementation of a marketing plan, the east side development is important, and we need to conduct at some point in time an organizational assessment. We need to develop airport infrastructure design standards. And we also need to plan and implement facility aesthetics upgrades. So as I mentioned before, we really don't have a business model, certainly, you know, one that, that works. And goal number one is basically situated around figuring out what we need to do in order to make our airport self-sufficient. There are lots of opportunities, I think, you know, for us to get out and, and find new sources of revenue. And we will do that along with enhancing our current revenue sources. Our goal is to get this completed in fiscal year 2022. And this is one of the items that is currently underway. The airport staff is not doing this in isolation. We're working with the folks at economic development and also the transportation department. And we really hope that we'll have a roadmap for the airport's future from a financial and operational standpoint when this is all said and done. Goal is a, is a, is a marketing plan. So once we have decided where we want to focus attention on in terms of new revenue sources, et cetera, we need to develop and implement a marketing plan to attract the types of businesses that are desired. And we anticipate that we'll be working on this in the second half of fiscal year 2022. Again, our airport staff will be working on it. But in addition to that, we'll be looking for help from the folks in economic development and in other arms and branches of the transportation department. So I think most of you know that, you know, most of the airport, all of the airport right now is, is over on the west side of the airport. But there are 122 acres east of the runway that is just out there right now. There's nothing at all happening with it. And that is land that is developable, developable over time. It's not developable, developable in its current condition. And so what we need to do is to go as part of this, you know, the end goal, part of our business plan, et cetera, figure out where we want to place different aspects of business industry on those facilities, and then move infrastructure to support them to those areas. So where do roads go? Where do taxiways go? Where is the nearest electric? Where is the nearest sewer? And how do we get those, those aspects, you know, to the land? And we need a plan, you know, for making all that happen over time. It's not going to be anything that happens in one fell swoop, but over time, it will happen. And we'll be looking for a financing plan to make all that happen. So goal number three is a, is a big one for the, for the airport. And again, it's not anything that we're going to be doing in isolation. We'll be working with the folks at economic development, engineering, and transportation to ensure that that is the case. So goal four has to do with how the airport is, is organized. We currently have six staff members working at the airport, soon to be seven. I can tell you that it's not enough, and we don't have necessarily, you know, the correct positions to achieve the goals that we're going to be, be looking to move, move towards. And so we're going to be looking to evaluate our organization and staffing needs in order to make sure that we have the appropriate people on board to, to make it something that is going to be great. We'll be working with the folks in human resources to ensure that that happens. You've heard me talk about aesthetics for, on more than one occasion. And if you've driven by the airport, I'm sure most of you would agree that it, we don't paint a very nice picture, you know, for our city with regard to our airport. And one of the reasons for that is that our airport doesn't currently have any design standards. And so developers show up, they leave. standards, and so, developers show up, they lease land from us, there are not a lot of stipulations on what they need to do in order to have that, have that facility, you know, look nice for us, and over time, we have a pretty eclectic group of buildings on the airport. And I think if we're going to move forward and challenge, you know, some of the other airports around the, the valley, that we need to put standards in place that make our airport, you know, what we, what we want it to be. And so, those design standards, you know, for, for new facilities, you know, that might develop on the airport, we are planning on completing those design standards in fiscal year 2022, and again, the folks that are working on this with us are, you know, certainly, you know, the airport staff, but we're also working with the Engineering Department and Development Services to make all that happen. So, the airport design standards are about moving forward, but we've got a lot of property that has been developed already, certainly, you know, the, the area along Glendale Avenue and on the west side along Glen Harbor will leave a bit to be desired, and so, goal six is about fixing that. It's about going back and, and looking at stuff that is already in place and making improvements in it. We're not necessarily looking at or asking our tenants, you know, to do anything special, although if the, if the occasion comes and we can assist them in, in making improvements in the way that their property looks, we can do so. But the city has under, under its control, you know, things like signs, fencing, landscaping, lighting, et cetera, and our terminal building that we can make improvements in over time and will move us, I think, in the right direction for big improvements in the airport and assist us in, in attracting some of the business that we're looking to in the future. So, Mayor and Council, Glendale Municipal Airport, again, aims to be Arizona's premier general aviation airport, and we hope that you'll agree that we're headed in the right direction, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, you are headed in the right direction, and it's a breath of fresh air. I want to commend you on the strategic plan. I read it over the weekend. As you well know, I made notes referring to specific pages, and I wanted to start by asking a couple of questions that might help frame, at least, part of my thinking is, and I, I think the basic question is, is can the airport be made to accommodate heavier aircraft? That's my first question.
Okay. And so, Mayor, Councilmember Clark, the airport right now has a seven thousand one hundred and fifty-foot long runway that's a hundred feet wide, and those parameters kind of lock you in on, on, on the size of some aircraft. The other big thing that we have to concern ourselves with is the bearing strength of the pavement. And so, right now, I think the, the bearing strength of the pavement is sixty-five thousand pounds. Many of the larger aircraft that would show up are a hundred thousand pounds, and while we can handle those larger aircraft on sort of a one-off basis, as that was happening every day, it would be an issue for us. But, one of the projects that we have in our capital improvement project or program is a project to reconstruct the runway in, in a couple of years, maybe as far as three years out, and that will present us with an opportunity to strengthen that runway and allow us to do more.
So, I'm not sure I got a straight answer. Build a heavier runway, but, but my question is, will, will that be enough to accommodate heavier aircraft?
It will accommodate heavier aircraft for our fiscal year.
Okay, so we can put bigger corporate jets or whatever, they'll be able to use the airport, correct?
So, most corporate jets can, can operate at our airport today.
All right, that, that leads me to my next question.
Yes, ma'am.
FedEx and Amazon, for example, have cargo aircraft. Would they be, would we be able to accommodate them on our runway, at our airport?
If we're talking about aircraft like a...
I have no idea what they would be.
Probably not with regard to those aircraft.
Okay. Because one of, one of the things that, as you know, I put in my notes was, let me talk about a couple of things, but one is, the airport sits between Westgate and the Sports and Entertainment District and what we call the New Frontier with all of that industrial manufacturing, commercial. And somehow or other, we need to figure out how we can better reach out to the New Frontier facilities and how we can accommodate their interests in terms of the need for flight as well. So, I, when we talk about Westgate, yes, corporate aircraft holding musical acts or people coming in to fly at the Super Bowl, but that's once every four years, but while we not only need to continue to focus on that, we need to focus on how we can accommodate those facilities that are locating in the New Frontier area, because I think that's a big untapped market for us, unrealized. In terms of, there are a couple of things, other things, if you don't mind, Mayor, that it's okay, that I can touch upon. City Hall was built in nineteen eighty-four, this building, these buildings. The airport was built in nineteen eighty-six. That's over thirty, thirty-five years ago for both. While we are, are embarking on a program to rehab City Hall, obviously, there is no program at the present to rehab the terminal or any of the buildings, and I think that points out an underlying problem in that the past thirty-five years, the airport has been generally ignored, and there's been a lot of apathy about, about its use, and we have not taken full advantage of something that could be a major economic driver and eventually become a premier economic driver in the city of Glendale. So, I am glad that we are finally paying attention to it, and while we make plans, which plans are always great, but show me the money. Yeah, we're looking at design standards, we're looking at a business plan, we're looking at a plan for the east side, but until we allocate actual resources for any of those plans, that's all ours, just plans, and, and again, we're just marking time, just like we've done, I don't know how many other airport plans I've, I've seen in my past twenty years on council, but there have been at least three or four, and I don't want this to end up just another one on the shelf that we never, never do anything about. So, I think it's, I, I'm really pleased that, that we're focusing in on this, but until we allocate the necessary resources to make it happen, it's just another plan. One other thing that kind of concerned me was this. We're going to develop a marketing plan. Okay, what the heck are we marketing? There's nothing to market there right now but a sad, dilapidated, ignored airport. That doesn't, as you said, doesn't look very inviting and has been difficult in terms of securing people's interest because of the aesthetics of the place. So, as much as we're gung ho to do a marketing plan right away, until, until we know what the east side plan is, until we know what the business plan is, I think doing a marketing plan is premature, and then certainly until we've spiffed up the airport so it doesn't look quite the way it looks. Last area that, that I wish to comment on is public relations and how, I, I bet there are a lot of people that don't even know that Glendale has an airport, much less where it is. Leads to two, two separate issues. One, our signage, our wayfinding signage for the airport. That is something that we could be doing immediately, is popping up more signage to let people know where the airport is and to make that intersection, entryway into the airport more attractive, to beef it up so that it looks like something that people will notice when they drive by on our newly reconstructed Glendale Avenue. But another area is, is that when the general public, the citizens of Glendale, don't know about the airport or haven't thought about the airport, it's hard to gin up support for it because it's been ignored for so long. We need to start holding public events at the airport again, especially now that COVID is hopefully waning. Ten years ago, we used to have the Thunderbird balloon race at the airport, or Thunderbird balloon classic. We had thirty, forty thousand people coming to that airport for that, that balloon show, and people knew where the airport was and they were proud of it. They knew it was there. We need to start, and I'm not saying resurrect the, the balloon show, but I think we need to start holding public events at the airport so that more of our citizens and more of the general public become familiar with its location and what it has to offer. Last, last comment I will make right now is this. The, the airport restaurant, poor little thing that it is, has had a series of tenants who have been able to make a go of it because, quite frankly, there weren't enough customers to sustain the restaurant. So, I know it's a crazy idea, but what if the city contacted a culinary arts school and offered that space to their students as a real restaurant learning experience? One, it would open up the restaurant at least for a couple of hours every day and start driving some traffic to it. That is one way. I mean, I used to go have lunch out at the airport, and I haven't done that in years since the airport's been closed. So, I, I think that there are things outside the box, and when you all think outside the box, I am a very happy person, because I think that's, that's what needs to happen if we're really going to resurrect this airport. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I'm, I'm going to make a comment, and then I'm going to call on Mr. Phelps next. Councilmember Clark's right in several things that she said. The restaurant, what, I think what most people don't know is, the city years ago had issues with tenants out there, and some of the tenants actually worked against the city and discouraged people from coming to Glendale Airport, which we have to do a better job of fixing that. It's, it's been a long time, but we have a great opportunity today to start, start repairing a lot of the, the hurt feelings that happened over the years. You know, I'd, I'd ask everybody to think about this for a minute, you know, how, how far will one mile of road take you? It'll take you one mile, but how far will one mile of runway take you? It takes you anywhere in the world, and, and that's, that's what people need to, to start realizing. We have a, a, a wonderful opportunity if we can figure out how to do it or the people to put in charge, but if you were to fly from Rocky Point, Mexico to Glendale, you either have to go to Yuma or you have to go to Tucson and land and be checked in, basically, to come into the United States. Mesa, I think, recently just made an exception or had an exception made for them where they can get some flights into Mesa and then also Sky Harbor for the large commercial, but I'd like to see us work and, and see if we can't figure out a way that we could actually have an opportunity for people to land directly at Glendale Airport from Rocky Point or any, any cities down there that people may be traveling into Mexico. And also, and I've talked about this multiple times, I still think desperately that, that we need to do that low river crossing. I think that unless you're going to Glendale Airport, you're never going to accidentally get there. You have to be trying to go there to get there. And, and unlike Sky Harbor, I've been at Sky Harbor before, where I'm like, how in the world did I end up here? I get hung up in the freeways, and sometimes I can't figure out how I got there, but our airport, we need to have a, a way that people can go, I think, from the new road that we recently built, Ballpark Boulevard, a low river crossing that anytime we don't have a flood, people could cross it and then actually go to our airport. I think that we would attract a lot more attention, I think we'd have a lot more opportunities for people to go directly to Westgate, and I think it's something that we seriously need to look at, you know, a low river crossing. And then, the airshow that Councilmember Clark talked about, the balloon was a problem because of all the growth west of Glendale Airport, and that was problematic. It, it can be overcome. Certainly, it's a lot of work with the FAA and everybody else around, but between Goodyear, Luke Airport Base and, and the surrounding community, balloon's got to have a place to land, so it's something that can be done, but I do think that airshows, whether it's a static or an actual airshow, I think maybe we should be talking with Luke and, and maybe try to do an airshow the opposite year that they're doing theirs. They do theirs every two years. We, we could certainly be that feeling every other year that they're not doing theirs. So, I do think, I think there's a lot of opportunities for us. It, it is truly a gem as a pilot owning a hangar out there for twenty years. I can tell you, it's, it's fantastic right now for a general aviation pilot because you don't have a lot of waiting. You can get in, you can get out real easy. As this grows, and I have all the confidence in the world in your abilities to do that, the time for getting out's going to take longer, but it is what it is. I mean, we're a growing population, and I think, finally, before I turn this over to Mr. Phelps, I think we've got a great opportunity to work with the city of Peoria and, and, and figure out a way to utilize both the city of Peoria, what they're looking for for economic growth, also what the city of Glendale's looking for. Mr. Phelps.
Well, Mayor, members of the council, first of all, thank you for your interest on this subject. I'd like to start first with, well, Carl just getting on to his two-year anniversary. Just to remind you that we're, I think we're very fortunate to have Carl on our team. If you're not familiar with his career, he most recently ran an airport back in Mississippi, but prior to that, an extensive career as second-in-command at Sky Harbor Airport. And so, we have somebody here that really understands the aviation, has the relationships with the key partners that are out there, and, and, and he's, he's back here at Glendale because he sees the, the opportunity of what we can do. I think Councilmember Clark is correct that we can obviously see signs of disinvestment. I've only been here a little under six years, but I would guess that things like, you know, the Gila River Arena or the Camelback Ranch and then the downturn in the economy, all of those factored in to the capacity of the city to be able to, to invest in the airport while they're, while they're making other very major investments in other types of infrastructure. But, but the good thing is, those, those days we've turned the corner, as you know, and our financial ability to start looking at the airport has greatly increased over the several years. I want to mention something Carl did focus on, is that if done correctly, there is a business model to where you can cover your capital cost and operating cost at the airport. And that's, again, then that's why a strategic plan is so important. It, I think it's really important to understand when we talk about opportunities, I want to kind of bring it down to a little bit different level in that if you look at Scottsdale, and I'll, and Deer Valley as another example, but Scottsdale is virtually built out at their airport, and now, the, there's been a number of new hangars that have been built there that are literally down, almost like going down a side aisle because they're trying to squeeze in the demand. What's happened is, over the last several years, the personal or the private business jets have grown in terms of size. You're now seeing the very strong market in like the G eight hundred Gulfstream or the Bombardier seventy-five hundred, which are long-range, able to go nonstop to Europe, and their tail fins are higher to be able to accommodate more fuel. And so, what it's done, it's made a lot of the hangars in airports in their region somewhat outdated because they can't park the new jets with the higher tail fins in that area. Now, the market is... Now, the market is incredibly hot in the personal or in the business jet world. For example, Gulfstream has almost a two-year backlog on delivering jets to the corporate market. There's been the outset of companies like NetJet, which allows people to fly using kind of a subscription model. They're talking about a fifty percent increase in twenty-two over twenty-one. That's how fast this market is growing. So the opportunity is this. Most airports cannot accommodate the really new high-end business jets that are here. Because we have a hundred and twenty-two acres, that is almost unprecedented for an airport in an urban area like Glendale Airport is located in, which means I think we can start going after that market. Now, I come from the Northwest. In the Northwest, it's a, it's a kind of a similar kind of problem, except for yachts. The most difficult thing to do, if you, if you're a yacht owner of a, of a yacht, say, seventy-five feet to a hundred and fifty feet in length, finding moorage is next to impossible. And so that's where the real market is at, not in the more thirty-five to sixty-five foot size. The market for aviation, I think that we can really tap into from an opportunity, is to be able to track the, have hangars developed that can accommodate the larger business jet market that's taking place. So one of the things we'll be looking at and studying is what it would take to start developing the east side. And I think what you'll be seeing from us, and I appreciate the notion of this being a strategic plan, that we get to stamp it, approve it, and set it on the shelf, I can assure you, that's not what Carl and, and our transportation people are thinking, and it's certainly not what your city manager is thinking. We really want to leverage this. And so I think in time, and not too down, far down the road, we would like to show a financing plan where maybe we start with one or two large corporate hangars on the east side. Get those leased up into where they are, where they're, they're generating the right revenue, and then build the next two hangars. And, and really, like what Scottsdale has done, which is continue to invest in their infrastructure, lease up the space, and then they add more infrastructure. And I believe that's a really a, a strong likelihood. What's playing in our favor as well is the fact that we now have a large amount of corporate presence starting to take place in the West Valley. And that plays into this very, very much as well, because without going into numbers, we know, and, and our economic development department, we kind of laugh, we normally go out and look at the tailfins, we find their number on the tailfin, and we know who this quote-unquote confidential user's gonna be, because you can just trace it down. We are seeing large corporations coming into our airport as they're looking for a place to site. So I just want to say that I, I think that there is a business model going forward. We're gonna be working hard on this. I think we're positioned now well to do that, both from a financial standpoint, from a market standpoint, but probably most importantly, from a leadership of having Carl onboard with his team. So we, we will come forward. Again, I appreciate the, the skepticism of strategic plans. I think the marketing plan is designed to start attracting potential end-users, that we can then identify what type of hangars and infrastructure we should be looking to construct. So I don't think it is, actually is too late in terms of going out and going forward. The great thing about a hangar, they're not terribly lengthy to build and construct. And so I, I think we can get moving on this sooner rather than later. Thank you.
You were just making a presentation, you didn't need a consensus, is that correct?
Mayor, I, I would just like to say one more thing.
Good.
I appreciate the comments of Mr. Phelps, and I appreciate yours as well, because you highlighted one thing that I forgot. I think that, that when you talked about a connection between the airport and Westgate, that is critical. And, and I think you're on the right track, and I want everyone to know that I share your feeling and your position on that and support it wholeheartedly. Thank you, Mayor.
Did you need a consensus, or you just presenting?
No, sir, just presenting and, and looking here that you guys think we're headed the right direction. Sounds like we are.
Sounds like it. Very good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Ms. Barrer, item number four, if you would, please.
Fund balance and community investment project update.
Mayor, members of the council, our next presentation will be handled by Eddie Garcia. He's our principal architect, a new position that you've funded here recently, and he's gonna give you an update on where we're at with our capital projects. As you know, we gave you one earlier this year, and we received a lot of positive comment back from the council, that you appreciated kind of knowing where we're at on some of these projects. And so with that, Eddie, I'll turn it over to you.
Try that with the speaker on this time. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. We have an update for you. As mentioned, my name is Eddie Garcia, and I'm the principal architect here with the engineering department and representing our team. Not only are we providing you an update today, we also are requesting consensus to transfer funds between the projects that I'm gonna talk about today. So we have a, not a lengthy presentation for you today. I know most of you have handouts, but we'll walk through in the order that we have. First and foremost, I want to bring attention to the idea that this is not just done in a silo by itself. These projects have been working in a, in a, in a collaborative manner between multiple departments over the last year. And so you can see quite a few on the list already, transportation, engineering, field operations, and of course, public facilities, rec, and special events. So all of these folks have been working diligently, working together with their teams to manage these projects together. I myself, as part of the engineering team, is helping to oversee these projects, and most recently in the last couple of months. Now, although I might be new to the organization here, I'll do my best to answer your questions as they come up. But if I cannot ask, answer a specific question, we have members from, from these departments to help answer as well. Just a quick timeline update. We started the process about a year ago at this time, back in October, and we established a nineteen point five nine million dollar allocated budget for projects throughout the city. And then back in November, a month later, there was additional council-directed projects. So the initial projects listed were about ten, and then some council-directed projects in November, followed by an update in February, and then a big, very similar to the November conversation, an update of transfer of contingency funds in April. In addition of, of four additional smaller projects as well during that time. Next, we thought it was important to show you how the, the approved projects have been allocated through that time period. So the four status pieces that we had earlier, back in October, November, and April, and then currently today. So if you move from left to right, you can see the original allocated funds. And on the bottom half of the, of the, of the list, you can see how, over time, new funds were allocated or reallocated to specific projects throughout the city. So November twenty-fourth, you can see in green, these were projects that were added. In red, these are, these are projects that are allocations that were transferred. Working with the same fifteen point nine seven million dollar budget. So that's really key to this, to this, all the work they've been doing. So we're working within our means, staying within our means, but maximizing the opportunities with that scope. So you can see on the far right how we're, everything's been reallocated today. The projects that you see and those reallocations are gonna be line item by line item for the rest of the presentation. I'll also bring attention to an approach on using an icon of red, green, and yellow to help you understand the, the budget status, the scope, and the schedule status for each project. Green meaning it's, it's good, we're confident, it be that the project's been completed. Yellow, we're, there's some caution, meaning that things are quite good, but we want to make sure that the project is still on track, as many might not be completed yet at this time. So we're proceeding with caution. And then red, in case there's something that needs to be mitigated in terms of budget, cost, or scope. So with that, the first project we have is pavement management. This is one of the very first projects allocated from the very, very beginning. This has benefited the entire city. We had a budget of five million dollars, a scope of fifty miles, and this included anything from rejuvenating the, the asphalt, slurry, and so forth, or seal. So depending on its needs, depending on its location, but it was fifty miles, the work was completed in June, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and all within budget in the timeline. So five million dollars there. Couple slides on our community centers. As many of you know, that these community centers have been, been stressed from both their use over time, and they've been relatively minor updates since. So this opportunity to refresh them in a new way, and also from a PR standpoint, public out-facing standpoint, was very important. So a budget of five million dollars was allocated. The projects identified were Rose Lane, Glendale, and O'Neil. And from, it's from left to right on the screen, you can see it's O'Neil, Glendale, and Rose Lane in sequence. The goal is to have all these projects completed by late summer of twenty twenty-two. The reason it's yellow for cautionary reasons is that the projects have not been under construction yet. So we're in the design process. And our second slide gives you a little idea of how we're doing that today. Prior to design, and I should also point out that the, that the facilities had some minor upgrades with MEP work, parking lots, and some of the interiors specifically at Glendale. But since then, council, in May twenty-fifth council meeting, we hired a design professional. DFDG Architects was awarded all three projects. You can see the, the, the amount that was budgeted for them. They are working on a staggered design schedule between now and the end of this year. So all three projects are currently in design. It's also the opportunity for us to engage a contractor community. So we're planning on bringing contractors onboard within the next month or so as part of our job order contracting agreements. And once we bring them onboard, we'll be able to hopefully start construction by the beginning of next year, which is January twenty twenty-two. Our next project, and this is the first one that has some mitigation that we'd like to talk about, we will, we will provide some recommendations and an approach at the very end of the presentation. So we won't have to focus specifically too much on the solution here at this moment, but we wanted to be transparent about what's happening in this particular budget. So we have two point four million with Sora Ranch Park. That included some HVAC upgrades, updating the Ramadas and some park lighting. And the park lighting was primarily converting from the traditional conventional lighting to LED fixtures and some updating of the fixture housings themselves. The HVAC work has been completed. The Ramadas, I'm happy to report, are, are completed. Fence is coming down on October eighteenth. If you haven't been out there, they look fantastic, completely refreshed. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Going back to page seven, you threw me for a loop when you put Rose Lane, Glendale, and O'Neil. Acateo is actually what I think everybody refers to, is what you're referring to as Glendale.
Yes, it's the Acateo location.
Okay, I just, because I'm going, what did I miss? I, I never heard of that one before. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're good.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Back to Sora Ranch.
Making sure. I didn't mean to throw you off.
No, absolutely, this is good. Sora Ranch Park lighting has been the, the concern for the budget itself, primarily being that, and I failed to mention that HVAC and the Ramadas are basically done and complete, and the fence is coming down. But the lighting still continues, and so we're looking at the park overall in terms of, not only its current master plan, but where we need to be. And in that process, our initial take on, on upgrading the lighting altogether has been a bit of a budget crunch for us, mainly because of the, the distribution that's currently there now and needs to be completely upgraded. It's been unstable for quite some time. I think if you've been out to the park occasionally, especially during a storm, the lights have gone out. It's been somewhat unstable there. So looking at photometrics with the new system, this caused us to relook at the distribution of, and the amount of fixtures that are required across the different site, areas of the site. So that in itself, we originally budgeted one point four mil, one point four five million. The revised lighting budget has come in about three hundred and sixty-nine K above that. There is good news, though. This particular overrun in lighting is only isolated to the lighting. The Ramada and the HVAC were doing great, have been some savings. So the overall project itself is only underfunded about two hundred thousand dollars. So even though there was an increase.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is there, is there a cost savings because you're putting in this new lighting with LEDs? Are we gonna save money there compared to the old lights?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have specific stats for that today. I can, I can request to see what the, the lifecycle advantage would be between the old and the new. Traditionally, the LEDs have been better in terms of energy costs and savings, but I don't have information today to, to present to you for that.
Yeah, I would, I think, I think probably everybody would like to have that if, if it's available. Not, not only cost savings for the electricity, it's usually like twenty percent of what the original cost was, but just the overall length, that you don't have to go out and keep changing out incandescent bulbs and halogen bulbs and things like that, too. So the overall cost of the, of the, the bulb itself.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to be clear. Thank you for your presentation thus far, it's great. Total project underfunded two hundred thousand dollars. Not that it was, just wanted to be clear, crack me if I'm wrong. The, the council didn't underfunded you, your team has a new scope of work based on the photometrics.
Correct.
And that's the bad thing about LED, the, great, but when you have the LED and you've got the old incandescent or the, whatever they're called, there's a, you, you just can't stop. You gotta do it all. So I just want to be clear, the council didn't underfunded, it's just a new scope of work.
Yes, it's, it's, I appreciate the clarity in your statement, Councilmember Donald. I feel that, you know, we can get more specific, but yes, the project itself, the scope has changed, and the dollars have changed. And part of it is, again, the photometrics and just the distribution, again, it's tired and has to be replaced.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, and, and thank you. Thank you for looking at the fact that you can't just stop where the budget stops and you have to continue. So thank you for your expertise, and I look forward to seeing you at the end of this presentation. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So is the, is the lighting for the entire park? Or where are we? I mean, I know we've had several incidents of arson in the historic side of the park. So is this to, basically to, to upgrade the lighting throughout the park? Or where are we upgrading the lighting?
It's gonna be in various zones, and, and I can ask Park Director Jim Burks to clarify this further, but the grand scope at this moment for this particular scope and budget and schedule is primarily the parking lots that are associated near the ballfields, which is in the, sort of the upper northwest corner of, of the site. Is the parking lot area just south of the, the Ramadas, some upgrades in distribution near the Ramadas, and then some of the historic buildings themselves. But it's not the entire park per se. Some of that lighting has been replaced before, to my knowledge. So it's, it's limited and more focused in for this particular scope and funding that we have today.
Mayor, if I could continue, so, I mean, the most important thing, obviously, would be the safety of, of patrons that use the park, for sure, that's number one. But second, the, you did mention the historic buildings that, I mean, to preserve the, the history and the integrity of those buildings. And we had, I, I don't know how many, but I know it's multiple, four or five, I'm getting a signal from the council member from the district, four or five incidents of arson there. So hopefully, and if it doesn't, I think, I feel that it should include some, I mean, lighting is, is good security. I mean, cameras would be awesome, too. I think they might have put some out there. But hopefully, this is gonna include some lighting over, people have events out there, too, in the packing shed and some of the other buildings. So I would hope that this would include lighting for, maybe make them more desirable for people to, to, you know, to rent the facilities, which also helps us with the cost, but also just for the safety and the preservation, that we don't have a bunch more fires up there, because when it's dark, you know, mischief happens. So, thank you.
Good, Councilmember. Moving forward, next is Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center. Initially, this was budgeted at one point nine million. During the reallocation in November and April, the, the amount was just down to one point three five million. So five hundred and fifty thousand dollars went to some future projects, and they're, they're outlined later in the presentation. There's approximately four that were allocated for. The scope of this one was primarily looking at flooring, skylighting, parking lot improvements, some folding walls and partitions, and the pools themselves, and some upgrades to the aquatic structures and shade structures, most of which has been completed thus far. The most outstanding item that we have right now is based in the aquatics and pools themselves. A lot of it has to do with the resurfacing of the pools themselves and then equipment that's driving. So that's what's means to be completed, and we're looking at anywhere between now and the end of January. We do want to be, have it ready for pool season, for sure. But while this is in, is somewhat dormant at the moment, this is where the effort's being placed. So right now, the work that's being done on the pools is gonna continue for a bit longer. Next is Hero Parks Lake, looking very good here. Initial budget was essentially, it served really as the catalyst for the project to have a lake. Not long ago, the library was completed, I think it was in 2018, which is a fantastic venue in itself, has some great views, the reading areas that come out into the outdoor porches and patios is fabulous, with the lake coming into play now. The $1.25 million was great in helping to provide amenities, which included the trail around the perimeter, Ramadas, piers, et cetera. Right now, we are seeing this to be completed in late December. December 28th is key for, is planning for an opening. But everything's on schedule and on budget at this time. So this one's looking great. Also looking really good, and mainly because the work has been completed. But if, I don't know how many of you have gone to the Glendale Adult Center just recently, but we have initially, there was a first phase of $250,000 allocated to do some repair work to the steel that was in front in the main entrance. There's some issues with it expanding and contracting. So that repair work was completed. And while that was happening, it was noticed that it was best to do the same thing on the perimeter as well. So additional $310,000 was added to the allocated budget for this project. You can see how the repair, the steel work and the permanent repairs are ongoing, but are added in this phase two. So the first phase was completed in June, and now that we're coming close to the middle of October, the second phase is just about completed. We feel very confident it'll be done by the end of October. And once again, on schedule and on budget. This is the second one of the projects that we want to bring to your attention that requires some mitigation in terms of budget. Initially, this is Rose Lane Pool, initial budget of $750,000, or excuse me, originally $450,000. And then in April, we added $300,000 to cover the remaining scope, which included replastering the pools, adding a chlorinator, some fence repairs, shade structures, aquatic equipment, and so forth. In this particular case, replastering and the shades and the fence are all completed. But the remaining upgrades are going to be done by the 2022 pool season. This project did open up during the July of this year, so that was really important to us to have the facility operational during that time period. So what couldn't be completed then is being completed now. In this process, when you start to tamper with valves and various equipment, much like the LED conversation, we just have a lighting, things need to be fixed, you can't just stop in a line. So once you go down and trace things back to the original equipment, upgrades are still ongoing. So this is where the project is requiring about another $125,000 to complete that work. And Councilmember Almama, just to your point of underfunded, it's a scope and budget issue, not a funding issue per se. Our next group of projects is park restrooms. Our budget is 1.2 million. Initially, we had Boncel, O'Neil, and Thunderbird Paseo. And then in April, Rose Lane was added. And additional work at the Rose Lane Handball Court, there was some demolition that occurred there as well. These are prefabricated restroom units. They're basically designed and manufactured, and I don't want to say that they're ordered directly off the shelf because they are specific and tailored to your needs, but they are a manufactured product. They do require some review, including from the state of Arizona. So we're seeing some delays in that review time with the state of Arizona. And as soon as we clear the review process, which is concurrently ongoing, we will be able to get back and place the orders for these units. Right now, we're seeing it could be anywhere between the end of this month to start that order, but ongoing probably through February of 2022. It takes time.
Thank you, Mayor. So these are basically like modular units, essentially?
Essentially.
Whoops, sorry. What kind of security features do they have? I know we closed down the restrooms at Boncel Park. I know the sightlines weren't good, and there were a lot of reasons for doing that. But one of the reasons was, you know, there's, you know, a lot of times, bad things happen in park restrooms. So just what kind of security features do they have? Do they come with cameras or a way to hook up a camera? Maybe at least on the exterior so you can at least get pictures of people coming in? And if things happen, then you know approximately what time and who was in there, that kind of thing?
Councilmember Tomachoff, I will have to get you some more details on that, some specifics. I think primarily what I can speak to is just the actual function of the restroom design itself. These were essentially accommodating both ADA approaches. In fact, that was one of the delays that we're having is a larger changing table that's associated with the ADA bathrooms. And the remaining, their accessibility need is in terms of how they're created and put together as a module. Outside of that, I'd have to get you some additional information on the lighting and/or location and cameras that might be on it.
Signage, except, you know, like these premises are under surveillance. Obviously, you don't want to have surveillance, you know, inside a bathroom stall, obviously. But I'm not a big fan. I mean, I understand the need for them, but, you know, they're also, they attract illegal activity, restrooms in parks. So I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can any way to make that, at least as difficult as we possibly can.
We're going to make a note of this and to understand the lighting and this placement. So some security and lighting. Any other features?
No, I just, I mean, I brought this up over. I mean, some of the restrooms at Thunderbird Park have been closed for years because of illegal activity that happened in there. So they just attract people that want to go someplace where there's not a lot of people around and, you know, and they can, so whatever we can do to make them as safe as possible for the residents, the reason we're putting them in there is for the residents to be able to use when they're enjoying our park. So to make it as safe as possible, that's all. Thank you.
Do you happen to know if these are set up like some of the national park restrooms where you don't actually have an outside door? It's sort of an open, it's like a Sky Harbor where you can walk into the restroom and it's sort of got the little maze thing?
Like snail kind of thing.
Do they have that type of thing? Maybe that's a question for you, right?
Mayor, members of the council, these are individual restrooms. So they have a single door that's exterior. And then the way we designed them, to answer your question, Councilwoman, we cited each of these so they'd be lined up, so the doors are all on the same side, and they all face either public street or public parking lot. And at your request, when we were here last time, and I thought I'd sent a response to the council if I didn't, but I discussed it with Rick St. John's, and we talked about security and location and how these are structured so that they meet the best practice of what we know today, and we believe they do. We don't have cameras on them, but they will, exterior lighting, they do have ADA access, and they're positioned such that they're going to be much more visible. But there are four individual unisex stalls. They're not a restroom with a men's and women's side with a large space, then you go in and there's area for the activity that you're mentioning. It does happen in parks, especially when you place them way in the back or place them so they're away from the parking lots or away from the public streets, so they're just not as visible.
So does each individual restroom have a lavatory? Or is there a community lavatory that's outside that's...
No, Mayor, members of the council, each one has a sink inside it.
Okay.
Glorify Jay John's.
Well, this actually has a sewer line connected to it, correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
Nice reminder.
Mayor and councilmembers, the plan that you see in the graphic is what we have, or will be planning on ordering. So you can see how to, to Mr. Burke's comments, you can see the accesses from the exterior in each one with a toilet and sink and facility and be able to maneuver between. Security cameras. Originally, we had $250,000 to set aside for security cameras. This was primarily for some device and software itself. As the scopes were looking at more carefully and looking at locations as well, back in April, the $336,000 was added to the budget. So this is where we are with 586. The scope included Hero's Park Library, Hero's Skate Park, Foothill Skate Park, Main Library, the airport, Velmatig Library, and Foothills Library. So those are the locations that are currently scoped under this funding. Installation is still scheduled between the October 2021 through June 2022. The reason we have this one set up with a little bit different approach with showing $313,000 and change here is our shortfall based on where we are with scope again and budget, now that we're looking at the details of what it's going to take to put cameras at these locations. So rather than, we didn't want to mislead the idea that we are short, but we do have the ability to cover this through CIP funding today. So we felt as a team that this would, this 586 would be used in its complete allocation. And then we fell short in the, in terms of scope and installation of the cameras themselves, that we could cover $313,000 and $316,000 through CIP that we already have budgeted. So if anything, that was already originally set aside for security cameras for the city. So that's where we're making up the difference for security cameras.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes, we just had the discussion about the restrooms and security. Is there any idea about what the cost would be to take those locations where the restrooms are being installed and adding security cameras to those sites?
Councilmember Clark, I don't have that information at the moment. I may be able to have Rick St. John answer this question.
Councilmember Clark, to answer your question, there's probably not fiber in those parks as it exists today. So we'd have the option of installing fiber in those parks or doing a point-to-point system. When you do a point-to-point system, such as what we're doing at the Foothill Skate Park, it has to, it has to be visible from another camera system, if you will, so that it can send the information to that camera network that is connected to the fiber, and then it all goes back to the Real Time Crime Center.
So are you saying right now, there's, the infrastructure isn't there to do that?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, that's correct. It would be relatively expensive to install a couple of cameras that are networked.
Thank you.
Next project is Murphy Park along the, at the City Hall campus. This was an allocation of $60,000 primarily for painting, bollards, light poles, and the clock repair. Schedule, it's been completed for some time now. I don't know if you've been out there recently. It looks great. The clock is working more than twice a day, so it's fantastic. Yeah.
Only twice a day?
Only, more than twice a day.
At least.
The next list of projects are the council-directed items that were established back in November. Budget of $180,537. The scope included to the Glendale Adult Center second floor programming, which has been completed, economic development project manager, this allocation for that, and the Sora Ranch entrance. So Sora Ranch entrance also included all the painting and of all the fence work along the entranceway as well. So again, I don't know if you've been out there recently, but it looks fantastic, looks really good.
And I had a question on that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
One of the problems that we were having at Sora Ranch with the arson is the fences had major gaps in them. Did they fix that all the way around the entire property where people cannot through those bars?
I will ask Director Burke for that answer. Actually, looks like we have Michelle Watanco from Field Operations.
Of course, the option would make everybody fat so they can't get through what we currently have, but it might be more expensive.
Mayor and Councilmember Burke said he delegated. So yes, all the fences were fixed before they were painted, so all the gaps have been corrected.
Good, good. Excellent.
Next group of projects is, if, early in the presentation, we talked about the Foothills Recreation Aquatic Center reallocating $530,000. These are the projects that were reallocated to. So there was 300 that went to Foothills Playgrounds, $75,000 to the Fire Station 156. It was adding some trees and doing some painting. $40,000 for pavement at the Thunderbird Conservation Park, and there's a photo of the latest work there. $100,000 for equipment at FRAC, and then $35,000 in contingency. So everything is completed. The $100,000 at FRAC is still going on. It's going to go on for some time. But it's been used for a variety of items, including yoga mats and hand weights, some cardio machines, Wi-Fi, and some equipment that is associated with the operations of the center itself. There's still more to come. If there's anything specific that you need, let us know, and we can provide that information for you. Hopefully, all this will be complete through 2022. And finally, this is the summary of where we are. So with all the projects that we've had ongoing for the past year, especially in the last six months, we've made a lot of progress. So this is why the need for this update was very important. Summary was, we originally started with a $19.57 million allocation. Our contingency was 1.459. After the April meeting of this year, contingency was reduced to 568, 335. We still had some unprogrammed funds that were remaining. Part of that was from the council items as well. And so that's $150,094. Where we are right now in terms of the scopes and budgets that have increased and requiring some mitigation is what we're asking for today in terms of project decisions. We have Sora Ranch Park lighting, which is really the project itself, not necessarily specific to lighting, but the project itself needing $200,000 in funding, and Rose Lane Pool at 125. So we're looking at $325,000 in additional allocation. And then just for transparency, the security camera improvements are, the 1.3 is helping to cover the $313,000 that you see for security. So our recommendations as a team, from all the departments and as us as engineering, is that we would request council to approve $200,000 for Sora Ranch Park lighting from our contingency and approve $125,000 for the Rose Lane Pool from unprogrammed funds. That would reduce our contingency to 368,335, and the unprogrammed funds to 25,094. We didn't want to use all of the contingency because we have projects that are going to start in construction at the beginning of the year. We want to be safe about that. But overall, in looking at the entire project funds that we've had, and albeit the 10 projects that were put together in rather quick order, and the fact that the teams have been working really hard to manage within those budgets, I think we've done quite well. But this is our recommendation to council. And with that, this is the end of our presentation.
Questions? Good work.
Consensus.
There you go. Good work.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item number five.
Council item of special interest, street renaming policy.
Mayor, members of the council, while they're getting set up here, the next presentation is a follow-up on a council item of special interest, and it will be led by John Chief Menno, our Development Services Director, Don Bessler, Engineering Services Director, and Dan Clevinger, our Interim Transportation Director.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps, Mayor, members of council. I, as the city manager indicated, we're going to co-present today, so I'm going to kick off, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues, and we'll walk you through this presentation. To remind you, this is an item entitled "Street Renaming Process." This is a follow-up item. It is a council item of special interest. The last time we were before you formally was on January 12th at a council workshop. Staff presented the scope at that time that had been approved by the sponsoring council member, who was Councilmember Malmar, and approved by the city manager, and we brought that to you, and council did approve proceeding with this item. And so we've spent, seems like a long amount of time, but when you really get into it, there's all these nuances, and you'll see a little bit of that as we go through what is the draft proposal. As far as the things that you told us back in January, the next two slides are entitled "Consensus Direction." They have check marks on them because we think we hit the mark by either A, considering them, or... them, or, and/or B, including them into what is going to be a draft ordinance, or I should say policy. There's, I'm sorry, can we go back one slide? There you go. Again, needed to have a role for the residents, a role for the administration, and a role for council. Now we can go forward. Assure that there's a level of support by affected parties. What this means is that if you live on a street that's going to be proposed for a street name change, that you have a direct role in how that might come forward, at least through the residential, the process that's initiated by residents. Well, Jamchee will talk about that as he goes through that further. We also have, there's an element in here for fees, for an application fee. The issue of remuneration, we were asked to address this and what this spoke to was, should the council consider a policy that makes people whole or otherwise provides remuneration to them for whatever costs they might incur for changing their address? We considered that, and you'll see as we go through that, it's not something that we're recommending, but it was heavily considered and we'll explain why as we go through. Talks about reimbursements. If there is anything that the city needs to be reimbursed for, we address that. A timeline for reconsideration, so this isn't something that if somebody doesn't come out on the end of a decision that they want, that it just doesn't keep coming back to you over and over and over. Talked about us being able to maintain our autonomy, especially as it relates to non-contiguous streets, where maybe in one of our adjoining jurisdictions, it's named something, and in our jurisdiction, you still retain the authority to keep it named or have the name be whatever you'd like it to be. And it also respects the fact that MAG has a very prolific policy on how street naming and strengthening the grid works generally valley-wide, but it doesn't tie your hands, and so we'll speak to that as well. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, and he's going to walk you through several slides and then Jamchee will hop in as well.
Thanks, Don. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The American Association of Governments publishes a street naming guidelines, which is all this Valley City's follow-up. Don touched on this too. There's two important elements in the guidelines. One of those is consistent naming with a valley-wide, valley-wide grid and the street alignment so that we are contiguous with the other cities. And two, they're also very important, and this is part of why a lot of cities are reviewing their guidelines. We certainly want to avoid any offensive, derogatory, or confusing names, and that's for any language or translation. So that's taken place in some of the other Valley Cities. Third important element in this proposed policy is to maintain the council's ultimate authority for street naming and renaming. So that's important as well. We're going to go over two types of processes, two distinct processes. The first one is the administrative process. That's the process we use today. This is for current internal workings, if you will. Used to make routine street name changes or designations. The new legislative process is the reason we're here today to talk to you about. That's proposed today to address street name changes, requests from residents and business owners or those that might be council-initiated. Jamchee is going to continue with details on these two processes.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, first to deal with the administrative processes. We already have processes established to deal with these situations, mostly administratively. To give you an example, new streets, this is probably the most common, common type of occurrence where we would have renaming going on administratively. It's through the plating process. Of course, a plat is ultimately approved as final plat by this council, but leading up to it is all reviewed and identified through staff interaction to make sure that the street names align with those that might already exist and make sense in terms of postal delivery. It makes sense in terms of 911's response as well. Maps of dedication happen sometimes if it's not a plat, but you can still receive additional ride-of-way through maps of dedication. New street, new street names could be identified either through master plans or site plans. So that would be the first category and very common in, in terms of how we deal with new names. Unnamed ride-of-way, this is rather uncommon, but it could occur in some cases where we do not have an alignment particularly to identify what that future name could be. But when it's time to put that name forward, then that's where administratively it could be identified, but ultimately it still comes to this council in terms of an ordinance once a street name is established. And the third kind over here, that's correcting errors, once again, an uncommon process. It could be initiated by the applicant. If it happens to be their error, it could be a spelling error sometimes, or it could be by the city that we haven't quite captured the name that was desired and we would go back. In either case of correcting errors, whether by the applicant or by the city, it involves the city attorney's office and it involves signing off of a certificate of correction. Rarely done, but it's already in place. So to shift to the next slide, which is really the crux of the item of interest over here, this is something new. It comes into play if the existing street name is deemed offensive, derogatory, or confusing. Ultimately, this council makes that decision, but its, its origins are with the property owners and the business owners who feel that it meets one of these three criteria. Ultimately, as I said, it still comes to the council. So let me walk you through at a very high level the steps that would lead up to how it could come to you as a request for a street name change. The city accepts an application. It could be any resident, citizen, property owner. We review it internally if, to see if it makes sense that it can go forward through what we would call petition process. We work with engineering. We would work with transportation. We would work with all the, all the other public safety departments to see if it makes sense to actually even review the change first. We would then provide the applicant the opportunity to go through a petition process. It's similar in a way to the petition process that's already in place within transportation in this case, where they are dealing with traffic calming, where the ultimate goal would be street humps, street tables, or speed, speed humps and speed tables. In that scenario, we usually would desire 75% of those property owners or business owners along that stretch to sign off, prove that they are in favor of that petition. If it's a very short section of a street in this case, let's say it's less than 12 property owners, then we would suggest it be 100% sign-off to make sure that everybody is satisfied and going forward with that process. Once we receive what's, what would be an affidavit of circulation from the original petitioner, and we see that they've met all the other criteria of getting the right signatures, we would then accept that application and take over the responsibility from that point onward. The next decision point then has to be taking it to a public participation process. You would accept a fee that would cover the initial cost of what the staff would, in this case, host the public participation process. In a way, it would be similar to the citizen participation process that we already use when we have a land use change, whether it's zoning or conditional use permits, things like that. Except that we have now not one applicant, but several property owners down the street, so it wouldn't be fair for all of them to host together a public participation process. So the city staff at that point will take it over, and of course, we have a fee that we've collected to ensure that we've got certain costs covered in that. With the public participation process hosted then by city staff and we collect input, and of course, also I should mention the notification area to that. Some other communities also have such a policy in place right now, and our suggestion is to sort of follow along the same lines. So if it's a local street or a collector's street, it would be 1/8 of a mile from that street. That's about 660 feet on either side. If it's an arterial street, heavens forbid we get into that situation because we've got an established grid system with longstanding names, but if there was a need ever to do that, then of course, that notification area goes much larger to about a half a mile on either side. The notification area is simply for those folks to be informed that there'll be a meeting hosted by staff and they can participate and, and give us their comments. It doesn't mean that it's only limited to those folks. Anybody can participate in that. At the conclusion of the public participation process, staff would then put all that information together and come before council at that point with all that information, showing you the map, the list of those properties that are affected, and the likely cost associated with changing out the street name signs. That's typically done by the sign shop in transportation. So what would that cost be? And at that point, you host a public hearing and provide any direction that you would see to be council's, council's choice to go forward with it or not. Another process, also a legislative process, would be if it was a street name change initiated by the council. So in addition to name changes either initiated by property or business owners, the council already has and always had the right to change a street name. So the example that comes to mind is the most recent one. Bethany Home Road becomes Cardinal's Way, council-initiated, and you can always do that. So what we are only doing here, and, and on this slide, it's, it's simply affirming that the process would include something along those lines, that either the mayor or up to, or three council members might initiate the idea to have, have a discussion on a future agenda item. Once the full council has made a determination to go forward with such a suggestion, you give us direction, we'll come back to you at a later time with a map, with a list of those affected properties, the likely costs associated with any change out of street name signs, and then it'll be up to council direction to staff whether you want to go forward with that.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question here. I'm just a little unsure why we wouldn't be basically following along with our existing CIOSI, where one council member can bring an idea up, for example, a street name, and we can, I mean, and then it has to come, you know, you, you meet with the person, obviously would need to because you would know, we want to rename this street, and then bring it back and see if there's a consensus to move that item forward at the time rather than talking with two council members and, and I'm just not sure why we would be doing it that way. We kind of have a process already in place for council items of special interest. Where the, one, one person, the mayor could do it, but a council member would need three other council members to, I'm not sure why you couldn't just bring it up if you wanted to have, bring it forward for discussion to see if there was a consensus.
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachovs, that certainly could be an option. Just referring back to yet another way it could be done, and that's the only one that I was referring to, but what you're suggesting could also be part of the process. A charter as such does allow for the mayor or three council members to suggest what could be put on a topic on, on the agenda, so that's, that's your prerogative.
I like.
What?
I like Councilmember Tomachov's suggestion of a council item of special interest. We're all equal on this council, and I think every council member should have an opportunity to introduce the topic as a council item of special interest.
I agree.
So going to the next section on the post-change transition, here, regardless of whether the change was initiated by the council or the owners of property, several agencies would need to be informed of the change. And as you know, whenever we pass a policy and if it's done through an ordinance, we wait for 30 days for that protest period to get over. But our suggestion would be to not initiate the official change for several more months because so many things need to happen. From the city side, of course, it's the easier part. It's the changing out of the signs and the fabrication, putting it on. But the property owner has a whole lot of work to be done, including reaching out to their, their banks, to their relatives, the utilities. We would of course be in a position to provide them with a copy of the ordinance and the address change notification in case that's something that's needed for them to show to those agencies that they have to deal with. We would work with the folks in which the addressing is done at the 911 center. For that matter, Google Maps and other organizations would also need to know about it. It would take some time. So if we were to go forward with something like this, we would suggest a minimum of 120 days to work out those things and let the information go out before it becomes official.
Thank you, Jamchee. My job is to wrap up here and then just field questions and comments from the council. You see, they have a, the bullet today was to provide for you a draft policy for your consideration discussion. If this thing moves forward, then of course, we would be using something on our webpage or web link to provide easy access for people to be looking at it. And then our requested action again, last slide, is just to provide us some consensus about how you want to, how you want us to proceed or not with this. If you do, then of course, we would bring it back through the city manager's process so it's something you could formally discuss. One thing I made a note of for sure is that under Section 4B, the process about using the current council agenda-setting process, I didn't understand if you wanted to replace that with the CIOSI process or also identify the CIOSI process as another way that it could come forward.
Replace. Replace.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, we already have a, I mean, we, we have a council item of special interest. We could just do a street naming as a council item of special interest, so I don't, I don't, personally don't feel the need. And even, even if it comes from the mayor, no matter who it comes from, you still need a consensus to move anything forward. So it doesn't, the idea of having to get three other council members when you still need a consensus to move it forward, I, I just don't, don't really understand that. But I do have a question, and it relates to the Cardinal's Way name change, because do we, does this apply to a policy if you want to, or you or a constituent or a business or in this, in my case, a hospital would like to have a name change on just a section of the road? For example, interestingly enough, I just spoke to the CEO of Erbroso Arrowhead Hospital yesterday, and he was wondering how difficult it would be to change SAC Drive just east of 67th Avenue. There's literally nothing there but the hospital and then the future Phoenix Children's Hospital, and then it turns into 64th Avenue. So it'd just be a short section of road to change that section of road. I, I know we've done it. We did it on Bethany Home Road. We only changed part of Bethany Home Road. We didn't change Bethany Home Road everywhere in Glendale, so I don't know, does this, does this same policy apply to just a section of a street? I'm just curious how that would work.
So I'll, I'll answer that, I think, and certainly Dan or Jamchee could add to it. So I think that's the importance of having a written policy. Otherwise, it just, previously has been something that the council has initiated on its own. There wouldn't, there isn't an existing practice for a private citizen or a private business to initiate that process themselves. The issue always is, who does it affect, you know, from their address? And so the times that we've done it, Bethany Home Road, when we were doing Stonehaven, that was a good time because there was no addresses on that street, so it's relatively simple to do. Becomes obviously more complicated and potentially contentious if you have addresses.
Mayor, so if I could continue though, my point is SAC Drive goes east and west of 67th Avenue. West of 67th Avenue, I believe it's a cul-de-sac. There might be 10 houses or something on that section, but can you just change, we've done it, we just changed a portion of it, just that the name changes. Basically, street goes into the hospital, emergency access, I'm sure there'll be access to Phoenix Children's there, and then it winds around and turns into 64th Avenue, so it would only affect those addresses and not, if we could do it, and not the residents that live on the other side of 67th Avenue on SAC Drive.
Mayor, I think the answer to your question is you can do, you have the ultimate authority to name streets in Glendale, so you have the authority to do that. It's really a process on how you get there.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, two thoughts. The Cardinal's Way, I'm the one that brought that forward, it was my idea, but at the time, there was no addresses other than a couple city addresses for Water Meter or something like that. something like that. I don't remember exactly what it was. So it wasn't affecting anybody's financial, whether they have to order new checks or any of that, which I thought was a good time to do it. Since I've been here, we've done one official actual renaming, and we've done three ceremonial renamings, which might be an option for you. This council, well, the previous council before you came along renamed Glendale Avenue along with 59th Avenue, along out at Westgate. Ceremonial names that actually got signage, but it didn't, it didn't get into the problem where people had to change their addresses. So that's an option. I don't have a problem with what we have. I can't think, I can't think of a lot of times where we've renamed any street, so I don't know if we're putting a lot of effort into something that's not a big problem. My concern is always going to, no matter what, in the future, if we rename streets, businesses and homeowners, if they're not the ones looking for it, I don't think that we should make them have to pay for all the changes. And I know that that's going to be a point of contention for a lot of people, but if I'm just fine living on a road called Mad Max and somebody's offended by that and they want to change it to Happy Max, then they should be paying all my fees to change things. That, I mean, that's the way I see it. So it's certainly going to be a lot of discussion there, I'm sure.
And that was a question, Mayor, I had, because you mentioned about the fees or the cost of changing names, that you would address it, but I didn't hear any discussion about how that would be addressed.
Right, so Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, the fees that we would be charging would be those of staff time associated with taking the process through. The cost of changing out the signs itself, the metal fabrication, that'll be a Transportation Department cost, that will not be covered. So for example, the other communities, and we've tried to mirror this as close as we can to some other communities, they've charged $600 for the process to go forward. That certainly does not cover the fabrication cost of several signs. But also during the public participation process, our requirements would be, just like we do with land use decisions, we have signs posted on the property, and in this case, it will be signs posted in our right-of-way. The cost of those signs, individual signs itself ranges between $600 to $800, depending on how many signs eventually get put up. So it's certainly not recovering that cost. We aren't putting it on those who are petitioning it for a street name change at this time.
Mayor, if I may, I don't think you answered the question, which has to do with the cost that a property owner would have in changing his address, his bank accounts, his mortgage, and everything else that goes along with it.
And Mayor and Councilmember, on that, since the request is coming from the property owners, it's for them in that context to be considering that there's a cost associated with the change that they desire. If this council feels it's still going to be a city cost, then that too would have to be factored in.
And Mayor, if I may, then that answers the question, if it's a resident initiated, if it's a council initiated, how are those costs, now they're going to be forced upon them. The council will make a decision to make that change. How will those residents who, be compensated for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, so just to sort of come back over that, the mayor, I'll come back to your last point. The mayor started by saying, if I live on Mad Max and somebody wants to make it Happy Max, and now all of a sudden I have to burden the shoulder of this fee, well, the fee that Jam Sheed referred to is a $600 administrative fee. That fee wouldn't be collected till after there's a certified petition. So presumably, if you live on that street, in the mayor's example, you would either, if it's a small number of people, less than 12, you would have agreed that you want this to happen? Or if it's a much larger, then you might find yourself in the 25% that maybe didn't agree, but the 75% did. So that's part of it. We did consider this issue of remuneration, and it's just a very, very slippery slope. So this doesn't preclude the council from considering that, but it doesn't force you to consider it either. It's silent on that issue. So at some point, you could have staff come forward to you with our best understanding of costs to change out the signage, potential, whatever other information was available to us by people that might be affected by it. We would present that to you and, or the sitting council, and you would have an opportunity to contemplate that, either way.
So does that require 100% of the people that live on this street to be in agreeance? Simple majority, 75%? I need to know what you're proposing.
Mayor, in Section 4, I believe it is, or Section 3 of the draft policy, it describes for a street that has less than 12 people, it would require 100% of those people to sign the petition saying they want the name changed. If it is a larger, 12 or larger, then it would require 75% of the people.
Okay, so if the husband or wife don't agree, it ain't happening.
It's one vote per address. One vote per address.
Were you finished? Were you finished?
You. Yeah, so is the 75%, is that, is that coming from other cities' policies? Is that where that's coming from?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, I want to say yes. The other city that we looked at at the time was the city of Phoenix. The $600 fee I know came from that. I think the 75% is actually consistent with, as Jam Sheed said, our transportation fee to have street speed humps or speed tables put into neighborhoods. I think that's where we took that percentage from.
Yeah, I mean, I just feel like, I mean, as much as people either love or hate speed humps, if I live, if I was the 25% minority and people wanted to change my street name and I had to change my driver's license, all my credit cards, my passport, everything in your whole life, the address for everything, I wouldn't be real happy about it. So I don't know if that's a high enough threshold, at least my opinion, to force it upon somebody. I feel like if we're going, because to me, speed humps, it's a nuisance, but it's not the same as you literally having to change everything. So I feel like maybe we should be looking at a higher threshold on a, on a street with more people on it than 75%. That's just my opinion, anyway.
Mayor, thank you. To your previous question, I think we were looking at replacement, Mr. Besler. Remember your question about, is this a replacement for the part of the process? And I think the answer is yes. But secondly, I have no problem with the number of people being asked to sign because I had a cul-de-sac of eight homes that wanted to put up no parking signs. They needed 100%. One family refused, so they never got their signs. So that's a slippery slope. I think staff needs to figure that out in terms of whatever works best. I like the idea of charging a fee. We're all gung ho for free things. If it's free, yeah, sign me up. But I think if you've got skin in the game and you've got to pay something toward the process, that makes you think twice. So I would hope that we would retain whatever fee you all decide on, that there is a fee that must be paid by the neighbors that are requesting this. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Which opens up another can of worms, I believe, because we basically have been talking about the issues for residents, but if this becomes a council item of special interest and we vote to do it, how are the residents compensated or who pay? I mean, obviously, we can allocate monies. We have the vote on the budget, so we can just say we're going to pay for it. But where does the residents come into that? When, I mean, obviously, there's a legislative process they can engage in, but where is the compensation for that if we have any kind of, if we are, basically, we're not, we're not asked, they're not coming to us and say, please change our name. We're telling them, you will change the name, and this is what it's going to be. How do we deal with that?
So Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, again, under Section B, which would be the council-initiated process that you're describing, it just addresses it broadly. It says that it, that one of the things that staff would provide you among the analysis of cost to implement this change, basically changing out signage, is consideration of financial impacts that may result of the name change. So whatever information we would be able to provide you, we would do that, but there's not a formula, there's nothing like that where we plug in something and it spits out a number.
So if I may, Mayor, basically, at that time, if residents come forward and say, it's going to cost me $200 to do these changes, as a council, we could allocate that money to pay for that, those name changes, for that resident.
Mayor, Councilmember, the council would always have that prerogative to consider whatever impacts that it would be evaluating.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Few things. I think, I think it's beneficial to us to have a policy or process and get it in place before we, again, have the issue in front of us, so we have a way to do this. I do believe that for council initiation, that our council item of special interest process has served us well on a wide variety of things, and I think it'll serve us, again, here. So I think we should use that process if it's council-initiated. If it is citizen resident-initiated, which basically means they weren't able to find a council member to introduce it for them, but they wanted to proceed anyway, then it's one way to look at it perhaps, but I, I'm fine with having that opportunity. I don't like having the 100% requirement for streets of 12 or less. I think 75% across the board is fine. One person shouldn't be able to have that much control over their neighbors. If their neighbors dislike the name of the street that they live on so much that they're willing to go through the citizen-initiated process to change it, then all their, it's not giving them, it doesn't mean it's going to happen because the street renaming comes to the council anyway. It's just the process is, how do you get it to the council? We change the name of the street. So I don't think, in essence, you know, you're having one person out there veto their neighbors being able to get it onto our agenda and to our attention. So I think that just 75% across the board is enough. Should the council decide to change a street name, if the council thought that it was doing so and had broad community benefit, we might decide to allocate a sum to each affected resident to help compensate for the cost of changing the name. Or if we thought that, you know, changing it from Walnut to Pecan is not a big deal, but if you want it, you can have it, but that's only your benefit, you'll pay for those changes, then we wouldn't have to. We'd have, we have all the options still. So that's how I would do it. Thank you.
Anyone else? What else do you have?
Mayor, that's it. We're just here to share information and take whatever direction you give us.
Mayor, just a question from Mr. Besler. I looked up the responsibilities of C-Toc because generally, these items go to the commission first for recommendation. Is there a reason why it didn't go to C-Toc?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, I'm not, I know what you're referring to, the Citizens' Commission, and I guess I would just have Dan address that. I'm not sure how things come before them, so.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, C-Toc reviews a lot of the go spending, some of the big-ticket items. I guess it could have gone there, the funding for like the street name changes, changing out the street name signs would be a cost, but potentially, depending on the length of the segment that gets changed, it might be kind of minor. So I guess we chose to come directly to council because it's not a big-ticket go-tax item.
Thank you. I don't, thank you. I don't think the cost of a sign is a prerequisite to go to the commission. However, for Parks and Recreation, if you want to change the name of a facility, has to go through, part of the process is you have to go to the commission. I just want to be sure before we move forward on everything we've talked about, that we didn't skip a process that we're supposed to go through. I don't believe the cost of the sign or changing the name of a facility is a prerequisite, but is anybody, maybe the city attorney can help. Are we missing a process, a step in the process?
Mayor, members of council, just a reminder, this was a council item of special interest. So typically, we would bring that back to the council first, and then we can redirect if there's consensus to move forward. You know, I know, since I've been here, there's been some times when we got a, that was a council item of special interest outside first. So I think the process here was just, do you want us to move forward with the policy? If so, we can add that step in. I think it's a great recommendation, and we can then run that by and then provide a report back to the council on what their input is.
Mayor, all right, hold on. My issue is going to go back to the cost to the individual homeowner if they're not in support. I don't believe under any circumstance that because somebody else is wanting something changed, that their neighbor should have to pay for it. I just, I really strongly feel that way. So unless there's some way that it's 100% people supported, I don't support that particular part that was brought up by another council member. I, I'm fine with the, with the 100% of the neighbors, less than 12 or 12 and under, and 75% more. I think 75% most times is pretty hard to get anyway, but in a small cul-de-sac something, I just think that all of a sudden, when you start looking at all the things that could cost you, I don't think it's fair that somebody could dictate to you because of their belief that you should be paying money out of pocket. I just, I really feel strongly like it. So that's where I'm at. So we're going to go to Mr. Turner next, and then you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to say that I agree with Councilmember Aldama. If there is a consensus to move forward with this today before we formalize the details of the policy, I would like to have the input from the Transportation Commission. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with you completely. If it's 12 or under, it should be 100% because I agree. Why should someone who does not agree bear that kind of cost? So I support your position on that.
12 or under. Okay, so let's do that portion of it. Is there a consensus on the 12 and under 100%?
Yes.
Okay, we do have a consensus on that. And then more than 12, 75%?
Yes.
Okay, we do have that also. What else do you need from us?
Mayor, I think we got it. We'll come back to you with something that includes, as the city manager indicated, a place in the process for the board to be brought into it at the appropriate time, but not before the council has taken action to move this thing along.
Okay, could you do one other thing with this on the ceremonial signs? Can you, can you get some cost that's related to that? If somebody, for instance, the hospital is looking for that, if they said, yeah, you know what, we'd like to go ahead and do ceremonial, not do a official name change, but a ceremonial change, what the cost would be involved there in the process for a council or a citizen to get that? It is sort of two different things, but not completely.
We can do that.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Okay, very good, thank you. Item six.
Council item of special interest, Remnant Glen Lakes parcel.
Mayor, members of council, staff report today provided, again, kind of a double team here, will be with Brian Friedman, Director of Economic Development, and Don Besor, Director of Engineering.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Phelps, thank you for the introduction. We are here on a council item of special interest for the Glen Lakes Remnant parcel. I'll be presenting today with Brian Friedman, our Economic Development Director. The last time we brought this to you was on June 8th, and at that time, there was quite a bit of discussion about the economics of selling, not selling, what the parcel, what the potential for the parcel would be. And the council specifically asked staff to ensure that our economic development team was part of that conversation. Brian and I have partnered to try to ensure you have as much information as we feel we can provide you at this time and keep moving through this. To remind you, in June, the consensus direction that was provided was to make sure that we considered different options for the sale of the parcel. We did that. As I mentioned, we've engaged economic development. There'll be some information following in the presentation about zoning and rezoning, general plan amendment, that you wanted to go on record to say there could be uses that are undesirable. And so we'll address that in the presentation as well. You said that you wanted to do things in such a way to encourage neighborhood engagement. Our recommendation that will be given you at the end, we'll talk about how we can do that, and that you'll reserve the right to decide on a sale strategy after. that, and that you'll reserve the right to decide on a sale strategy after you've had a chance to absorb this information and review it further. With that, I'll turn it over to Brian to walk you through the guts of this, which is really the economic analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Bessler, Mayor and Council. Is that on now? Better, thank you. With your consensus direction given at last March, I had the opportunity to contact Nate Nathan and Associates. I spoke to the principal and Ms. Courtney Buck, who does a lot of the work with Mr. Nathan's, and they were kind enough to offer a broker opinion of value. And at that, at the onset of the opportunity, their report indicates a value of $6.50 per square foot for a 1.4 acre parcel for a total of $419,049. Mr. Nathan's also shared that, in his opinion, we could choose to put out this opportunity nationally for a commercial opportunity, for retail, for office, et cetera, and that allow the open market to respond in kind with an opportunity for council then to consider at a future date. Equipped with this information, and after having several meetings with department colleagues, we've collaborated to provide council three options today about how they could perceive this opportunity. The first strategy, which is Strategy A, is to retain the property while the adjacent residential communities developed, and then complete, have it completed 100%, and then proceed with a market analysis to assess the conditions at that time. I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Raiola, which is the managing director of land for townhomes today, and he let me know that they would be picking up their permit by the end of the week, and would proceed to construction in about one month's time, with approximately 13 months being their construction schedule for the initial street road systems into the development, including the model homes, and then approximately two- to three-year build-out for the 173 homes. And as part of, as part of looking at the strategy, we could choose to maintenance the property and keep it up while, in the interim of all these 173 homes being built, we could authorize staff to move forward with the rezoning prior to the sale, and then we could, of course, with the rezoning process includes the neighborhood plan and the public processes, portion of the entitlement process. If in the interim, staff through working with council would decide to additionally de-restrict the property at a later date beyond the zoning opportunity, council could choose to do that as well. That is Strategy A. The second option for council to consider is Strategy B, where we could utilize a broker to market the property immediately to gauge interest and see what unrestricted proposals we may receive from the open market. We could use our broker-on-call list and simply select a broker and have them go out and market our interest and see what would result in the, in the open markets, look at this 1.4 acres, and then bring that back for council's consideration. We could do zoning actions that would take place after the initial direction received through these interested purchasers, and that would be Strategy B. Strategy C is similar to Strategy B in that we would utilize a broker to market the property immediately with agreed-upon use restrictions and solicit proposals from the open market. This option considers both the economic and community value, uses restrictions that could be determined by council, limits qualified proposals to those that do not include restricted uses, and allows qualified proposals to be presented for council in light of their, what they would like not to see on behalf of the public. The zoning process then could take place after council's initial direction regarding the interested purchasers. And just as a refresh for council and members of the public that may be watching, the zoning on the property is A1, and the general plan designation is Parks and Open Space. No matter what the council may choose with the property in terms of options, our strategies A, E, and C, it would require a public process to own the property to welcome any end-users to the site. And this, List Mayor and Council, is just a quick summary for you to use, and I'll go and put this right back up after the next and final slide, which is, staff is recommending in conclusion that we proceed with Strategy A at this time, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Friedman, so, help me out here. If this council was going to make a decision on the rezoning, wouldn't we want to do that before people start moving into their new homes? So they know what they have when they're buying that new home and having it built? Wouldn't that be more advantageous for the homeowners than to wait and then go back and start the rezoning process when you have, you know, 150 neighbors?
Yeah, Mayor, council members, Mayor, that is, you know, one of the options is, do you, you know, proceed in light of what your, what your statements are, or do you say, in light of really who's going to be primarily affected with the, you know, still going to have 600 new folks living in 173 homes, we'd like to go ahead and wait and have those 600 folks also have a voice in the 1.4 acres, or the converse, as you point out?
But they would have a voice if they're buying already knowing that that's going to happen, is what I'm saying. It would be, I think, less costly for the city right up front, and there's no surprises. So, under that scenario, which is that A, B, or C?
C. Yep.
C, okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent point. The people, people vote with their wallet. If they don't like, if they don't like what the zoning is, and I mean, we're, we're well enough versed in compatible uses for that piece of property adjacent to residential neighborhood. We do this all the time, and the market is extremely hot right now. I just don't see any reason why we would wait. I mean, we can wait for the right proposal, but I agree with the mayor. I think, you know, it's probably going to be a PAD so that we have some flexibility, but we, we know what uses are compatible with a residential neighborhood and what are not, so I think we should just go ahead and move forward and get it on the market, and people will know, I mean, we can provide, make sure we provide the information to the salespeople in the office that they're able to advise people, you know, it's going to be this, this, and this, and, you know, or these are the uses that are not allowed. But I think, I agree, I think Strategy C, in my opinion, is probably the best. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, I mean, I think there's, you could do a hybrid. The city could initiate now what, you know, what type of uses you want to see there through the zoning. I think it was more timing for us. I mean, again, it's a council decision, but with, with the developments that are taking place in the Beryl District, what's going to happen is, is we're going to start seeing some of the demographics improve, some of the numbers improve, which would likely attract potentially a better type of development going there, especially if it's on the retail or food and beverage side, and that would then, in our, in our thought would be, increase the value of the property. But again, it's kind of your call, but you could go through the process, determine what you want to go there so the public would know what the likely uses are. Again, it'd be unlikely that we're going to find a buyer and identified uses prior to construction of the, of homes by town, but that would be an alternative for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand your point, but the development, developer, or somebody who would choose us to develop that site would understand the economics of the new residential homes going in there, and the price point and all of that that comes with it, and that the, what the demographics are going to be. So I don't, I don't, at least in my view, I wouldn't see that as an obstacle for somebody to decide what type of development, and we could go ahead and make it known, even if we can't get the zoning. We're zoning our own piece of property. I mean, we should be able to expedite that relatively quickly, and we could, you know, we've got, I think, a pretty standard list of prohibited uses that we already know aren't compatible with residential areas that we could at least provide, that we don't have the, we don't have the PAD drafted and approved yet, but these are the uses that we are certainly not going to allow here, so that at least they know that, so.
Mr. Mayor, so just something that, I mean, I know it sounds like it's easy, but I mean, I think, let's talk about drive-through. That would typically be in a C1, but drive-through may be something that the, you know, that the neighbors would have some concerns about because of the impact. So, again, my thought would be at least start going through the process of your community outreach, identify the types of uses that the community wants to see, then you could choose to put it on sale at that time exactly, or you could wait to do it at a later time.
Mayor, I don't have anything to add. That's essentially what I was going to say. Earlier, the question was asked, where would you start the zoning process? Well, it's all, kind of, as the city manager indicated, it could be a hybrid, but we really said in Strategy A, let's get, to your point, let's get the land-use public participation process going for all the reasons that have been stated, and you always can come along as quickly or as slow as you want with the sale.
We, as far as drive-throughs, I mean, there's still a way to manage that, and we could require a conditional use permit to allow a drive-through there. That, that could be written into the PAD, that if there was, if somebody wanted that use, that they would have to get a conditional use permit to do that. So the market is ripe right now for development. I, my opinion is, we don't wait. We can still make sure we get something that's suitable for that site and, and move, if we don't get anything we like, we, we can still wait. I mean, the waiting is not, it doesn't take out the option of waiting if we end up not getting any projects that we like, but we may miss a project that we like by waiting. So I think the best process is to just move forward, and then we can pick the development that we like. But the drive-through is not a big deal because I believe you could require conditional use permit for any drive-through on the premises where they would have to, it would have to work for the residential area behind it, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Yeah, so Strategy A doesn't say, "Start the process now," and it says, "Wait until the community's completed," and then proceed with an analysis and, and assess the conditions and all that, and I would really appreciate the councils not taking the wait attitude on this. Strategy B, which basically says, "Bring us your ideas, market," and it, we can have some restrictions, or we could actually, you know, say, "Here's what we want, who wants to build it for us?" But I think Strategy B or C is perfectly fine, but we need to get this started. Let's get this thing marketed. It has been blight on the neighborhood since the day the, the city locked the doors. You know, we have boarded up windows, we've got weeds, we've got a broken sign with its guts exposed, we've got grass that either isn't getting mowed or is dead and brown, depending on, on the rain, we've got dead trees, we've got the chain-link fence and the ugly slats that's never been taken care of. It gets litter, the traffic control devices are torn down and broken more often than they're up and looking right. We need to deal with this. It's city-owned property, it's blight in this neighborhood, we need to move forward, and I would really appreciate the council's support in this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is not rocket science. Why don't we figure out, by talking to the neighborhoods, what's the best and appropriate use for that property and move forward with rezoning? Once that's done, we can put it on the market. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I just want to clarify, Councilmember Turner, our Strategy A is intended to convey that while we may not be ready to sell the property immediately, we would proceed with the rezoning, the public outreach, the public engagement piece, assuming that's what council agreed to, not wait. We intended to convey that we would go forward sooner than later with that, not hold it, and then once we decide, okay, now is the time to sell, then we'll start that process. So if we didn't convey that, I apologize.
Yeah, well, it doesn't, it wasn't conveyed, and I, I read my material, so, and the concept that maintenance and upkeep will continue, well, if it, maintenance and upkeep continues at the pace that it has for the last 10 months, it's unsatisfactory. Why should the citizens, even at this point, concur, incur the cost of the maintenance and upkeep? It's, I appreciate the idea of, let's go to the neighbors and ask them what they want, but as we've done in the past, we've said, "You need to give them something, you know, to choose from." Other, other words, everybody's going to want a Starbucks, right? And that's not, you know, that's not realistic. So we know what, we'll work there, and we know what the other zoning and uses to the east are on an extremely similar property, we know what's across the street and commercially in two different directions. As you said, it's not rocket science. Let's put this out to the market, see what the market might want to do there, and then we can do what we do. You know, it's our job to choose and, and move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of council, we can certainly expedite this. I will assure you that we will not receive, any offer we would receive would be contingent upon the zoning. So what we're just saying is, this has to be a minor plan amendment, which is a public process that we have to go through, so I think we can get where you want to be at, which is to, to accelerate the transition, but the first step really should be to start the entitlement process now. No one will buy the property because they want predictability. They want to invest their money and tie it up on a project when they know what the zoning is going to be. So I think that's what I'm hearing is, that's really the first step, identify, because the general plan minor amendment requires a public process, we can start that, and then the broker will tell you that it's easier to market a commercial property once the zoning is for sure not going through the process. Trust me, I've done this, I believe I speak with a certain amount of understanding of how the market works, but I think we can get to where you want to be at, and I, and I, I know we've talked, Councilmember Turner, about, about the upkeep and maintenance, and we know we need to do a probably increased amount of effort out there to do that. I think that's a, regardless of what process you decide to do, we're going to have to deal with that. But, but no one will buy this property until the entitlements are in place. They may do a contingent sale on it, but in the day, we're still going to have to maintain that property and figure out a solution that meets the community needs.
And my earlier question was, what is going to be the quickest process? And so somewhere or another, we got, somewhere or another, to C, when it sounds like A is still really the best. So I don't know how that confusion set in, but.
If I can, Mayor and council members, A was intended to wait until the homes were completed, all 173 homes were completed. So the notion, as Mr. Phelps was saying, is that the, the market would respond better to knowing of the built condition of all the property to the north. They can relate to that, the demographics would be altered through the additional 600 residents that are there, the payroll in the area demographically would be different because there would be more folks living in the region, there's a little bit of uptick in the, in the marketplace relative to the surety of knowing what exact is around you in a full 360. You do have the site plans, but I want to be clear, that Strategy A was to wait until the homes were developed and then, then go and, and seek additional considerations with council. We could work on the zoning as part of Strategy A, as Mr. Phelps was saying, we could still do that. So the question is timing between going out to zoning, which includes a public process, and that time period where you would go then out with a broker to market the property, and that's the difference between the strategies.
Okay. We're going over here next.
Thank you, Mayor. We had seven or eight offers at least on the larger parcel before it, the general plan amendment process had begun, or the zoning and all of that. We own the property, we control its zoning, we can tell our broker, be sure to tell potential buyers that there's 173 upscale homes coming here, there's 208 upscale apartments straight up the road, there's however many upscale townhomes going in across the street in the manatee, and whatever else. We can, we can tell that. They don't, I can't imagine they have to wait and, and see smoke coming out of the chimneys before they decide that this is a place they might want to invest in, and they might want to be working in a timeframe that gets them open, and at the same time that the build-out's completed. So I think we can, we can do this. We've done it in the past, it's not unusual. Let's get this thing on the market.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't, I don't understand the complexity of the zoning case. We're the property owner, we approve the zoning. I mean, it should be, you know, I mean, I don't, I just don't see that it's going to be that complicated, and I, I just don't see any reason to wait. And if anybody's driven by there, I actually drove by there on my way here today, and it's not being maintained. It's not. And if I lived in that area, I would not be happy with the city of the way, the condition of that furniture along northern, which is one of the major thoroughfares in our city, the way that looks is not okay. So, and you know, we can take it off our books by selling, selling the property to somebody and letting them develop it, and then we don't have to deal with it anymore. We don't, the, those homes are going to sell as fast as they can build them in this market. There's still a severe housing shortage in this valley, and they're not going to have any problem selling all those homes and all the townhomes and everything they build, they're going to have people lined up to buy them. So I can't imagine a developer that wants to develop this commercial parcel is going to be hesitant because the homes haven't all come out of the ground yet. So I think, I think we move forward, I think, I feel like it's the smartest thing for us to do.
Mayor, I think the homes being there are irrelevant whether they're built already or not. That part I agree with, but I also... or not, that part I agree with, but I also agree with what the city manager said, to a developer, having an entitlement already on the property saves them considerable time and money going through that entitlement process. I see nothing wrong with us going ahead and rezoning the property, using public participation, which is all about transparency, using public transparency and deciding what, what is acceptable for that parcel, and then marketing, and we can do it quickly enough because it's a city entitled project, so, I, I'm not in favor of waiting until all the homes are built, I think we should move ahead and rezone as quickly as possible and get that entitlement on the ground before we sell.
Okay, we done? Okay, so, let's start off with Strategy A, is there consensus for Strategy A?
No, because that's waiting.
What?
No, because that's waiting.
Okay, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any, is there consensus for Strategy B? I see one, is there a consensus?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We proposed a hybrid, so maybe, maybe that might be helpful, I would say, in the A, the only thing we would delay initially would be going to market until such time that the rezoning and minor plan amendment has, has taken place. Again, that's what's going to control your timeline, is you, the city council can do a rezone, but this does require a general plan minor amendment, which has a more spelled out process for the timeline, so I think what I heard the recommendation would be is to immediately begin the public outreach and the rezoning, and then, at that time, come back to the council once it's in place, you could then determine at that time whether you're ready to immediately broker it and put it on the market, so I think that's the hybrid that is not listed on your A, B, and C.
Mayor? I honestly, and I don't know why this was drafted this way, it's a little, it's very confusing, because the only one that includes going through the zoning process is A, so, yeah, I agree with the hybrid, go ahead and go through the zoning process, but do not wait, and, and, like I said, I mean, I know there's a lot of, I mean, it's not like we're going to finish it in a couple weeks, I get that, but, we're the owner of the property, and we're going to approve whatever entitlements we give it, it should be, it's obviously a slam dunk, so, the other two, after I looked at it, says zoning actions would take place after council's initial direction regarding interested purchasers. I can see why staff picked A, because it's the only one that really talks about the zoning, so, could you tell us again exactly what the hybrid, basically the hybrid is, is C with zoning up front?
Well, maybe, let me frame it this way, the, the hybrid would be to immediately begin the process of entitling the property, which would include a community outreach program, I know you say it's no-brainer, but we don't know what the citizens want there, and I think we should listen and take that in, proceed as quickly and expediently as we can to get the entitlements in place. Once the entitlements are in place, immediately hire a broker that would then go out and market the site with those existing entitlements in place, to do it before then, to say to go to a Nathan or to a Caldwell banker and to say...
Nobody's saying that.
Excuse me, to say that, you know, let's market it today, that we know entitlements are coming down the road, probably is hard for them to do, so I, I think we would do it back-to-back, get the entitlements in place, and immediately get thumbs up from the council to go ahead and, and put it on the market.
And, and Mr. Phelps, with that said, that still does never preclude somebody from showing interest and making an offer on it as the process is handling.
That's correct.
We're not taking that away from anybody. Okay, so, as stated from our city manager, the, I don't know what we call it anymore, Plan C, no, Plan D, the hybrid, is there a consensus for the hybrid?
Yes.
Okay, there you go, sir.
Then, so, I think, we, we probably want to start getting some feedback from the council, we'll work on the process and we'll get our team together on it, obviously, Councilmember Turner, you have a pretty good handle on what the citizens and kind of the input there, but I think because of the sensitivity of this property, we really do want to reach out and, and get input from the citizens, so we'll, we'll probably put a little bit more extra effort into that process, but we'll make sure we keep you up to speed on that.
Well, it's going to require the minor general plan amendment process as well as the rezoning process, and, and that is plenty of transparency and plenty of opportunity for public input, I'm just concerned that, you know, when it comes time to rezon it, if we don't know who the end user is, then how are we going to know how we want to rezon it best, but I'm, let's get this process started, and the council has a consensus, as long as it does not include, is my understanding, that this does not include waiting until the subdivision's completed, because we have no idea when that's going to happen, okay? Because I've been told they're going to break ground or start grading, you know, within two weeks for the last six months, it seems like, so, we don't know when that's going to happen, let's get this thing moving and get this blight out of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, you got what you need, Jeff, city manager report?
Just real quickly, wanted to talk about a property that sold here in, in Glendale, which has been the largest real estate transaction in the state of Arizona, and it was for $186 million, and I wanted to bring it up just because, as you know, when we've been doing annexation property along the New Frontier Loop 303 area, we provide an economic benefits study from applied economics, so, oftentimes, we don't know what the end user is, so we kind of give a very conservative estimation of what those revenues would look like. In this particular case on the Lincoln property, we anticipated that, that the ongoing revenues over 10 years would be about 4.4 million, just based on a blended manufacturer industrial use. We now know who the tenant is, Walmart's coming in with the major operation on this site, and now the, the new estimated revenue to the city is 8.8 million for that 10-year period, so it was more than doubled in that case, and so we're, we're excited about that, that included construction sales tax, and then lease tax, property tax, and different permit fees, so in that case, we showed the council roughly about a four and a half million dollar one-time benefit, once we understood the developer or the project and end user and how, what the size and scope of the project was, that number went up considerably. Again, Economic Development Department has done a wonderful job of, of continuing to get these kinds of projects in the, in the pipeline, but that is Walmart coming in, and we can now announce that publicly, but this has been at 186 million, the largest single property transaction in the state of Arizona for this year. Thank you.
City attorney's report.
Aaron, council note report.
Council item special interest. I'm not going to read this thing, everybody knows what it is. Councilmember Alvin.
None at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Clark.
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Wonderful. Councilmember Tom Chough.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes, sir, thank you. I've said nothing a lot in the past, so I don't mind saying something today. Speaking of the 303 area, and we have, our general plan identifies regional mixed use for a significant portion of that, north of, I believe, Glendale Avenue to the city limits along the 303, so the regional mixed use is our general plan. As we are finding out, much of that property has entitlements under the county that we learned about at the time of annexation, and, and I would like for us to see if we can't get ahead of the game and have staff compare, what are the, the county entitlements already in place out there on properties that we would anticipate annexing, and compare it to our general plan so that we have, have a better idea of how, of what we're looking at there, and then, and this kind of fits in with it, and with the manager's announcement, I'm also interested in the South Dakota versus Wayfair Supreme Court ruling from last year, I believe, and if we could get some kind of a briefing, both that combines perhaps the city attorney's office and economic development, so that we can get a sense of how that Wayfair decision is going to affect the city, because as we all know, we've been very concerned about tax revenue out there and hoping that we would be able to have some cash registers, but if instead we're going to have a point of, or point of distribution type facility, final distribution, that may generate income as much or more than all the cash registers we could hope for, then that should give us a sense of, of future annexations, rezonings, and things like that, so that we're doing it fully informed. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
I have nothing, motion to go into exec, we have an executive session? We do.
So move.
Get a motion, I have a motion, or do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor of what, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay, period, as I said, we do have motion, passes, council meetings. I'm not recessing, we're going into exec.